That's very true. Black.
You're dead.
Yeah.
There's a bit.
We'll take it.
So that all to all.
That camera.
Oh, I'm right there.
So what is this?
There is. What do I say?
So.
It's just. What if you're standing?
I will.
I know.
Wait a second. You're right here. You're right here.
All right.
All right. When you're down. All of you stand. You can start sitting in the room. And stand behind and you can also sit in these seats up there. And not sitting here expecting. So we're gonna have to sit in this.
No, that's why. Wait, we have things to do. No way. This is actual microphone?
Hello?
Are you gonna take my seat?
Sure.
Yeah. This is my.
Hello?
Hello?
Take my seat.
I want the microphone. Yay, microphone. Microphone.
No. They go over here.
You should let all the kids off.
Not at all.
You should, you should let all the kids sit up on the wall. You don't like it.
My microphone. Or in the corner.
Yep. Some people here. Yeah, I'll let you do it.
You'll be. Come, take them away. And I think that's the one he takes. Right now. Hey, I'm a shot here on the camera. What? Yes, sir. Mr. Reese. Don't say that, Topher.
Mr. Reese.
Stop fooling around, Topher. No. I said stop fooling around, Topher. No. Topher, stop fooling around. Topher, stop it. I'm going.
There's gotta be problems.
Yeah.
Order, order. Order, order.
Yes.
Are you not getting out?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Hi, everybody. If we could, um, get the school and the select board, uh, sitting in the round table. Um, we can start our business.
I think we're a team. Wait, no.
There's more back there if people need to stand.
I have a microphone.
All right, let's stop the gavel.
He does.
All right. Yeah, are we ready?
Oh, I'm ready.
All right, are we recording?
Uh. I don't think so.
We are seeing. Kim, Kim zooming in. I think we have a bunch of extra sort of chairs around here, but, um. In any event, uh, hi, everybody. Uh, welcome to this joint meeting of the Hartford Select Board and School Board. Um, so the first part of this meeting, um, we're gonna get a chance, uh, for the School Board and Select Board to bring each other up to date on various things that we've been doing in the community. Uh, then there's actually a Select Board meeting afterwards, um, and we have a lot of people here who are going to be recognized, I think, this evening. Um, so I think it's about time we called this order, so if someone can gavel us in. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So I'm gonna call it order, this meeting of the Hartford Select Board on June thirteenth at six, uh, oh, four P M. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would anyone like to lead us tonight?
I will.
All right, thank you.
No, I will.
Say something.
Yeah, okay. Nobody wants to.
Wait, wait, what do I do?
Really? Anyone else? Okay. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the United States of America. And to the heart, for which trans, one nation under God, equal, liberty, justice.
Do you want to make all? All right, I gotta pass the mic.
Hello?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, the June thirteenth School Board meeting. At this point, uh, I'd like to, uh, turn the festivities over to our clerk, Nancy Russell, uh, to take care of our student recognition.
Welcome, everyone. It's so nice to see this many people here. I love it. I love it. All the kids are excited to be here. So we've got a special, um, little bit of a program here for you and, uh, yeah. So this is. This is, uh, from Attic. They did a wonderful, wonderful project that was brought to my attention and we thought that, um, that they deserved to have the attention of the public of Hartford. So I'm going to turn it over to the aisle. And she is gonna tell the whole event. Is that correct?
Yes, I do. Well, I get you. Um, well, thank you for having us and for allowing ourselves to be quite at home in your space. Um, this project was really not my project at all. Um, it was a form to the fourth grade team. Um, Mrs. Stone, G D Stone, um, Erica Beesel, one of our special educators, and Sandra Locke with other students. Especially to the students, the teachers, um, got this idea, um, when we attended the E L Education National Conference last year and we learned about another school, um, that had used the idea of buttons to allow students to be seen, um, as they wanted to. At school and, um, be able to explore their identity and there are multiple, multiple facets of their identity and to get to know each other and kind of have that visual conversation starter for them to be able to share what's important about who they are. Um, and then our fourth graders got so excited about, um, making their own buttons that they wound up creating a video, which I don't know if you all saw or are planning to show or. We'll get you the link, don't worry. Um, they made this really amazing video telling, um, about the project in general, but also about their buttons. And, um, on our Better World Day on May fifth, they went stations and every student in the school got to make buttons and then even more just kind of student voice about who they are and what they're proud of in themselves came out, um, from that, so.
Would you introduce them?
I would be happy to introduce them. I have a question. Is it okay if they, if anyone wants to share?
Oh, please, absolutely.
So when I get to you, if you have one of your buttons on that you wanna say anything about, um, you're welcome to, like, just like you did in the video. This is, this is why, this is why I made it. Um, okay, so these are kids from both classes. Um, Kate and Madison, do you wanna say anything about any of your buttons? Kaylee Barnaby. Molly Baggy.
Um, I don't have my buttons on, but I have one. It is, um, it's L G B T Q plus pride and it's, um, it's good pride and, yeah.
Hannah Whitney.
I don't have mine right now, but, um, I don't have a mine right now, but I have one. It's a blue sign with, um, a rainbow inside of it. Um, um, T Q pride and I.
Thank Hannah. Henry Cassius.
Hey.
I'm the, me, trying to, okay, thank everyone. I'm, I'm under, um, either power or what it could be all.
Marley Ecker.
I have one, um, that says, be the custom piece because I like these and I want the world to be peace.
Absolutely. Ruth Tucker.
I have no.
Jack Fallon.
Um, I just have one. I have to pick one like Selena.
Topher Bundle.
I got one just that I like rocks.
Oscar Dushen.
Um, I have a button with a pencil and colored circles on it because I wanna be in Australia when I go.
Thank you. Someone's hiding in the seat somewhere else. I got everybody. Thanks for having us. We'll make sure you get the link.
Yes, please.
Kids, it's really, it's a good, good little video.
Yeah, and since George shared an amazing thing, even on the kids who are here, if you had that honor to get to see all their buttons, everything from the, the fun stuff to some really big things about who they are and, um, what they're proud of and what's hard for them. So thank you for having us.
Same.
The entire class, um, made the buttons and participated in the project for the school, but not everyone came tonight. We invited everyone, so, um, this is uh, not quite half of our fourth grade, yeah.
Thank you. And tomorrow I'll be dropping off, uh, to your principal, all of your certificates, so that, uh, each one of you will have certificates to take home with your parents, to your parents, okay? Congratulations, you guys did a great job. I did see the video and I loved it. You did a, I, I, again, you just did an outstanding job. So thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts for all that you're doing and great leaders of the future, okay? Thank you. We, we do have two special, uh, I think that are additional because they did something extra special.
And Senora Frisco has kind of the most information about their.
Who does?
Carrie Frisco.
Okay, Carrie, would you like to tell the rest of the group about these students and what they've done and their accomplishments? Thank you.
Sure, you can. All right, um, the Vermont Foreign Language Association offers, uh, different contests for foreign language students, grades, um, four through twelve. And one of the competitions was to make a poster that illustrated, um, a theme each year. And this year, Leela Hoffman won second place in the state of Vermont for her poster. And Leela, do you remember the theme of it?
Uh.
Do you have the poster?
Yeah.
Great.
It's, um, the beauty of our world is the diversity of its people.
Thank you.
Cool.
And in the spring during, uh, National Poetry Month, the Vermont Foreign Language Association offers students the opportunity to memorize a poem and recite it, um, and record themselves and be judged against their peers, grades four through six. And grade, uh, four student Hannah Whitney won first place. In memorizing and presenting a poem, uh, by Jose Martí, a famous poet from Cuba, who was also president of Cuba before the revolution. Um, and she said, uh, was about a la rosa blanca. So congratulations to both of them. And can you still recite it here? Cultivo una rosa blanca. But we can send you the link.
I saw that link too and she's outstanding in it. Thank you again, parents. You should be so proud of these kids. We are. And, um, they're outstanding. They're just outstanding. So thank you for bringing them along and coming along and giving them the praise that they deserve. Again, guys and girls, thank you very much. Congratulations. They're gonna go out the door on the back side, so I'm gonna turn the mic back over to them.
Well, thank you again, uh, for joining us, uh, parents and teachers, uh, and especially our students. We are so proud of you all. Thank you. Yeah, I don't think we have chairs. Must be good. I agree. It's my understanding. This is the way you're teaching. It's just, it's just being broadcast, thank you. Yep. It should be, yeah. Usually. Well, that was nice. The rest of the students. Yeah, we, we try to do that, um, at least once where we can, in a month. Yep. Um, and, you know, when we get, we have a lot going on, you know, in schools. You know, just, just, it doesn't take a lot of time, but it means so much, um, to our kids and to the families. You know, as, as you see, it's pretty powerful.
And each of the students get a certificate with their name on it.
Awesome.
So.
There's a memory subject.
Thank you all for letting me.
Who's this? So I guess we're ready for that. Yeah, I guess we're ready, yeah. It's sort of a left, right, right, about the seat there though. You saw it's a divided, it's, it should not have. I, I tried to mix it up. It's nowhere aside.
This is the first step. The fact that you're all. It's progress.
You're good. You know, it's, it's, the, uh, the initial piece kinda got things a little wonky. It wasn't. I'm sorry. But, uh, it's, it's always nice when we can, when it comes in, especially when it's, uh, just, if, if, that's what we do at the end of the day. It's great when it's celebratory, um, but sometimes not too much. So those are great opportunities. So, um, I would read, uh, next, next segment, we shift over towards, um. Yeah, our next item is a welcome. Uh, I don't know whether everyone knows, presumably we all know each other, but if not, we wanted to go around and introduce ourselves. And then we have, uh, community agreements and that's the next thing.
Right.
So, um, I'm happy to start, um, or we can go with the mic. I'm gonna approach Christie, our school board. Rusty, what's our first school board?
I'm Doug Evansides, Hartford's school board.
Peter Merrill, Hartford's school board and resident of Attic.
Julie Robinson, director of elementary curriculum instructions.
Brian Thor, current educator for secondary.
Lady Collins, select board.
I'm Tom Paulson, I'm the superintendent.
Mary Erdy, select board from Wilder.
Ben Fraser, select board.
Mike Hoyt, select board.
Rocket, select board.
Alex Benches, select board.
Hey folks, Mary Yaman, guest. Nancy Russell, so, as school board.
Okay.
We did go back. Oh, and we have, we have Kim Suzy joining us.
Yes.
Hey, oh, hey.
Yeah.
Kim Suzy, the select board. Thanks for having me.
So our next item is community agreements.
Yes.
Yeah, great.
Yes, great, thank you. Um, hi, everyone. It's so nice to be here and I love the fact that we're in a circle because every time I've been in a space, it's been, you put a, you know, different setup and, um, so it's important to set the space up so we all feel like we're part of the same group and aligned. So I just appreciate, appreciate how like saying something like that, right? Um, I just wanna say a couple of things before we get to community agreements, um, just to set a little bit of context. Um, does anyone know who the anniversary of, um, an important civil rights leader, who was sixty years, died, died sixty years ago yesterday?
That your average?
Yes. Where's the price, Peter? I was listening to a beautiful story yesterday on the radio about the legacy of Maker Evers, who was the first secretary, field secretary for the N W A C P in Mississippi, and was assassinated by a Klan member at the age of thirty-seven. And for those of you who know me, part of what I like to do is always ground the conversation and the work that we're doing together in history. Because I think history and also the current context is really important to ground us in why we're doing what we're doing. So I, I wanted to bring sort of the, the memory and the legacy of, of Maker Evers into the room and to also just remind us that what we are doing in our conversation about how do we build a welcoming, safe community where access to, um, food, shelter, and education, and basic human needs and human rights are available to everyone. So what we're talking about tonight is how do we really think about building a community where everyone gets to bring their full selves and get what they need? And, um, certainly his, um, work was part of that. And the other thing that's kind of exciting is that Windsor is about to, um, start its first N W A C P chapter in Windsor, so in Windsor time. So we're very excited about that. The other name that I wanna bring to the room quickly because I'm also an educator is Grace Lee Boggs. Anyone know who Grace Lee Boggs is? Grace Lee Boggs is, uh, identifies, um, is no longer with us. I think she died at a hundred and one. She was a Chinese-American activist. And a friend of mine who does a lot of work in schools just came back from Detroit. And her, one of her, um, favorite locations in Detroit, they built a school and they named it after Grace Lee Boggs. So again, thinking about the people and the, and the vision and the legacy of those who came before us, I think is always important. And we certainly have that in Hartford, in this community as well. Um, so I'm gonna spend just a minute, um, sharing some guidelines for our work together tonight. And I went through all of my different lists of guidelines that I use and I was trying to not make it too, too long, so just bear with me. Um, and some of you are certainly familiar with this, but one thing I, I say always is that guidelines and thinking about how you create a space of having conversations of any kind are really important. So I encourage people to always think about, like, how can you create an invitation for how conversations happen using guidelines? So one of the guidelines for that is using I statements, speaking from your own experience. We also talk about, um, as an important guideline is paying attention to airtime and participation, which my eighty-eight-year-old father who lives with me still has to remind me of my participation time. Because he says I, I talk too much. Um, seek first to understand and then to be understood. And that can be challenging, given that we come in with a range of diverse perspectives and lived experiences. But I always try to seek first from understanding, to understand what's in front of me, what's being told to me, and then to be understood. Um, pay attention to your assumptions. We all carry assumptions and ideas. It's just part of being human and to notice the impact that those assumptions might have. Um, I like to say argue facts, not lived experiences. So if we surveyed everyone in this room around a particular question or, or identity, every single one of us is a unique, different lived experience. So wanna honor that, um, and honor that people are speaking their truth and telling their stories. Um, you can argue the facts. Respect multiple viewpoints and perspectives, um, critique ideas, not people. Uh, another one that I like to do when I'm teaching is to ask my students to lean into some discomfort, into the difficult conversations. So this idea of, we, I often, for myself, notice that I learn more when I'm uncomfortable. When I'm leaning into something that's something new for me, so that's an invitation for us to do that tonight. Uh, let's see, to be accountable for our own learning, so accountability, um, is, I think, really essential to how we have these conversations and how we move forward in terms of progress. Give each other permission to make mistakes and learn from those mistakes. And we welcome, I always say this where I work, we welcome conflict and discomfort as their size of growth. So I offer those to you, um, if we can collectively strive for, create that kind of space tonight, it'll be wonderful.
Pretty good?
Cool.
Thanks, Mike.
I think our next item is the short background and context of why we're here, when we all started working on this, uh, path together. So I don't know, you wanna kick us off for that or?
I can start it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll start it. See, I'm already breaking one of the guidelines. This is my dad would say if he was here. You're taking up all the airspace. But in all seriousness, I'm, I'm happy, first of all, I'm gonna say I'm very honored to be here in this conversation with you all tonight. Um, I do a lot of work around how do we build and strengthen communities around equity, diversity, all this language that we use, which maybe we'll talk about tonight. Um, but I really think it's about our collective humanity. So I wanna offer that as another way to think about this conversation that it's, it's really at this moment, I think more about how are we understanding and wrestling with our own humanity in a society that doesn't often honor all of that humanity? Um, so I got here, so I've been here a while. I've been here a few years. Um, I came here originally with my colleague Curtis Reed, who is the executive director for the Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity, which I think some of you know him and maybe even interviewed us originally. And we were really excited to have the opportunity to work with the town and the school board around thinking about how can we strengthen the core values of this town? Because really what we're talking about is what are the core values that each of you bring as community leaders and community members? And how do those align with these ideas that we talk about that have to do with equity or centering humanity or diversity? So we were really excited to have the opportunity to work with these two important leadership bodies in the community. And what we were able to do was over time, um, with a lot of travel from Rattleboro, um, and a lot of food at the Co-op, we did focus groups and interviews and we got to speak with a lot of stakeholders in the community about what their experience was like being a member of this community. And. Um, and what folks were hoping for in terms of some change around how the community could come together and strengthen their own core values and their own beliefs around their collective humanity. And out of that, um, we put together a vision, a strategic plan with the help of amazing folks, like all of the folks who are still with H Cory, some of you and some of you aren't. Um, select board, school board, it really came together to think about what would be some recommendations that we could put forward to both the school district and the, and the town. Um, so that's the very short Reader's Digest version of, of how I got here and how we started this work. And what I'd like to just say, one more thing, is the strategic plan, which I know sometimes it's like that hot potato. I'm like, oh, the strategic plan. Um, but the truth is, it's really just a framework. You know, it's a framework to help you all think about what Curtis and I put in there five years ago is may not be relevant for this moment. So it is about adjusting and adapting and thinking about what will be most helpful for the town and the school district as they work in their own silos, but also collectively. And I see that as a framework that can ebb and flow and change. And hopefully, you know, we will talk more tonight about how we could do that. So part of the conversation tonight was how do we realign ourselves with the original intention of, of, of that strategic plan? Um, I like to think of it as like this living organism that's, um, there to support a process and to guide you. So I'm going to stop there and see if other folks, Coach Tom, and their H Cory people might want to add to how we got here.
Well, I, I think that we were having the discussions, um, you know, every, every community.
Do we need the microphone for the hours?
Uh, like Lana wanted us for.
Yeah, right. The Alice can hear us.
Yeah.
It does make it a little easier for us to hear us over the fans.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, it's usually an event, you know, that brings people together or pulls them apart. And in our case, the nexus that, that came about, you know, was that event that occurred in our community where an inadvert- inadvertent situation raised the specter of racism in our community. And it brought us to the point where we needed, as a community, totally, both in the school and the community at large, to look at, who are we? And what do we really represent? We came together and formed H Cory, which was a joint committee of the town of Hartford, our community. So look at that precept. This is one of the hardest discussions a community has to deal with, you know, in its life as a community. You know, look around the country, look around the state, and you see how it's being handled. Some places it's kind of okay and some people, not so much. So when I look at where we are, we've had our bumps and ups and downs, but we're here. You know, we're here tonight. We will continue to do our work. We've made that commitment to ourselves. We've made that commitment to our community. And that is the prime directive, you know, in, in my estimation. I'm, I'm proud of the fact that we're here. And, and I mean that, you know, from the bottom of my heart, because in my other roles around the state, they're not where we are. So even though we all wish we were farther along the road, you know, everything in its own time and place. You know, I, I've been quoting John Lewis, Congressman Lewis, Reverend Congressman Lewis, you know, often with this, one of his statements. And he said, little by little, day by day, what's meant for you will find its way. And to go to Mary's point about the historical context, that coming from a person like us, basically, working to try to change, you know, our, you know, our world. He almost died at a very young age and then spent the rest of his life doing this work. So when we think that, you know, we almost had too much, you know, it's not bad to look back and then say, well, we haven't even started to scratch this. So, um, that's kind of where, where I'm at about how we got here and where we can't go without.
Hey, wait, you listen.
Please.
Here, I'll, I'll do the.
So we're going to backtrack back a few years. Um, when President Obama was in office, um, when President Obama, uh, left the White House and, uh, President Trump took over, um, there was a email that was circulated within the town. Well, there was an email that was sent that was perceived as a political satire by the person that sent the email. And the interpretation by others was, was a racist, uh, cartoon. And then that's how the development of H Cory started within the town of Hartford. Um, that's the basic start of it. And as a result of what happened, um, we have begun to grow and understand better what implicit bias is, explicit bias, and where our own, uh, positions are in terms of, um, going forwards as a community. There's, we all come into the room with bias. And, um, in this, in this case, the, of the email that was sent, um, it was a, it was awakening for the gentleman to send it because he learned a lot from the, I guess you call it backlash, that became of that. And he understood afterwards how it could be perceived as a racist cartoon. And we have grown as a community from that incident. So even though it was a cartoon that was perceived by many as racist, it, it was a catalyst for the town and growth within the town. And, uh, I think it was a, a point that was, uh, I don't know, I want to say it was needed, that's not the proper term, but, um, it was something that kicked us in the gear maybe. Somebody has a different recommendation of acts.
I've got a question.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
This, this is actually maybe I would like to hear perspectives from the school on this. Um, I, I wonder oftentimes what the line is between someone being racist or sexist or whether, or something else bad and being ignorant. And when I look at that incident specifically, um, do we just take it for face value? I mean, obviously, I've only lived in town for under two years, so it was not here when it happened. So I just have to sort of take on faith what I hear. And if you want to believe the best in people, you say, maybe it was a moment of ignorance interpreting the cartoon in a certain way, um, even though it may have, or you could interpret it as being racist, right? Um, when I look at a child who knows very little about the world, I would say that's probably the greatest embodiment of ignorant, human ignorances in the child. And from an educational standpoint, we celebrate that as an opportunity for this child to learn and to grow. And I wonder, um, in our love of children and our love of, uh, the learning process, where do we, as a, as leadership or as a community or a society, cut that off and say, oh, you should have known better now? And therefore, we, we no longer interpret ignorance where we can, um, project racism or sexism or something like that. And I bring this up because I think that, um, my sense is that if we sort of treat people with the, um, benefit of the doubt, that there's, it seems to be a better opportunity for them to come around to learn. And if we treat them with sort of a projected judgment of racism, let's say in this case, that it seems to pretty consistently spark a strong defensive mechanism, after which point getting through to them in any sort of productive way seems almost impossible. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up and having so many educators in this room asking me for perspectives on that.
Thanks, Rocket. And I think, um, I'd love to hear our school members want to speak more deeply about that. I want to keep us up in terms of the updates. And I also think what you're bringing up is really important in terms of what is the work that all of us need to be doing around understanding that there is intent and that there's also impact, right? So, you know, we can support this individual in terms of his own learning, I'm reusing your example, Benny. And the fact is that for many people, there was an impact on whatever that particular racist meme was or cartoon or whatever it was, even if that wasn't the intention. So I just, again, we're all good and well-intentioned folks around how we want to make sure this community feels safe and people feel like they can bring their full selves, that their children can go to school and that they're not going to be experiencing harm. Um, and yet sometimes harm happens. And so we need to think about how, how those good intentions don't always lead to the best outcomes. And certainly I know the work in schools, they've been trying to, um, address some of that. Does anyone in the school, because what we could do is we could move into, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good, sorry, I can't see her, so. Kim?
Happy to wait to hear from members of the school board if you wanted, if any of them wanted to speak first.
Never give up your chance to have the microphone in your hand. So I'm going to speak from, uh, from two different areas. I'm going to speak from, as a great parent, of children that have, have gone through and are still going through our school system here. And then also as a early educator for twenty-plus years. So to you, to, to your, hopefully to your, to answer you, Rocket, uh, I can't, can't speak tonight. And, uh, for children to grow up and they learn from what they see in here at home. So you can have a three-year-old coming into a preschool room that without knowing he is prejudiced because he doesn't even know what the word means, but he sees his adheres at home and therefore he carries it into that classroom with him. And that's when we as educators have to be educated ourselves as to what is the best way to handle this? And how do we teach them that being prejudiced is not an okay thing to be? I think that's really difficult and I think it's difficult in our small community. Um, and because we'll look around the room. We have, what, one, two, three? I can't see no good. People that are not quite Caucasian. And that seems to be really what this community is, is made of. And the very first, um, annual meeting that I went to for the school board for, we had a speaker from the Midwest, I can't remember her name, but she talked to us about our prejudice. And I thought, I'm not prejudiced, what is she talking about? And more by the time she got fifteen minutes into that first speech and talking to us, I said, oh, my goodness. I do have some prejudice that I didn't even think I had, was not even aware of. I think that that sometimes that eye-wakening moment, um, is very difficult for you to be. I'm in my seventies, so let me tell you, when that hit me between the eyes, I'm thinking, oh my, I've lived all this time and I had this prejudice and I didn't even know it. And I think that's a lot of people, and I think parents are that way. They don't realize that they're demonstrating a prejudice, that their children are picking up on that and bringing it to preschools and to schools and to special events, to the older, to the older kids. And we as educators and we as this community's school board has worked very hard so that we can get our teachers to be informed and to know how to approach these in a educational and a loving, caring way for the students. In the same fashion, we've got to remember some of these teachers are being prejudiced, are not being prejudiced. They are being labeled and they are being, um, having some hard times. And I know that because some of them have come to me about it because that's sort of where I go to that, we're meeting at the school. Labeled, uh, labeled by their sexuality, labeled by their, their race. And, um, and they have a really hard time with that and a lot of it's coming from the students. And I'm thinking, oh, that breaks my heart. That students think that they have to speak to their teachers in this fashion and the ways that I was being told. So we're working on that too. So not only do we have to protect our children, do we have to protect our staff and our teachers who are trying very hard to, to not show prejudice and to be themselves? And, uh, and to get that information to the parents also. And that's a real hard one to do.
I, I don't want to put school leaders who are here on the spot when I'm going to. Um, because, you know, what we want to do is to hear a little bit, and maybe this will answer some of the questions, Rocket, that you're posing and some of the points that Nancy's bringing. But if there are any, um, anything, we can start with the school board in terms of the work that you've been engaging in, how, um, would you describe some of the successes in that? And I've been pretty integral in terms of being observing that, not making it happen, but observing that, being there with you all in many places of, of school district. Um, and then what are some of the challenges that you're also seeing as you think about parts of the strategic plan that you took forward or other initiatives that you are trying to bring forward?
Yeah. Before we do that, do you want to respond to something, Kim, which you want to read?
Um, can, can I briefly just chime in?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I think what I, I hope we will begin to take away from this conversation is I am not, I don't, I don't think it's, um, for the town or the school to be looking at issues of racial inequity on an inter, on a personal level, on an individual level. Like, I think that, that incident that we're all referring to happened, but it would have happened in a different way with a different person. It wasn't, it wasn't a flaw on an individual level. It was, um, prevalent. And, and one of the ways that I think we have the ability to improve the conditions overall are just to be able to talk about this stuff with it not being so weird and taboo. Like, we live in Vermont in a predominantly white culture. And that's fine, but it means we also don't often have consideration to talk about what the legacy of historic racial inequities has to do with the ways, the systems, the institutions that we participate in now. So that's my goal as, um, uh, our work in this municipal and school district level as, is to be able to normalize these discussions that, um, might feel a little uncomfortable, but that they're part of our, our life, our culture. Thanks.
Thanks, Kim. Anything from the school side?
Been around when all these things, things happen. Uh, I think we've come a long way. We've, what we've done is just what Kim said is, is made it possible and comfortable for folks to talk about these things. And I guess if I had to put my finger on the real progress, that's what it is. We've made it okay to talk about this and to sort of explore our reality and our beliefs in this, in this area in a way that people don't feel judged, but people help them, people understand it, people try to bring them forward. Um, and I think that's been a real power of this work with the school board is a couple really powerful policies um that have laid the groundwork for people to feel empowered to, to talk. And you know, our practice with the, with those kids has really been, you know, restored. You might say something that offends someone, but we're going to explain why that might be offensive and what you could do differently or help you with your learning so that you can understand, you know, why that might be offensive. But it's deep work and I think, you know, that's where we've been focused is on making it okay to talk about and explore. And uh, not necessarily okay, but at least we're, we're talking about it and making a progress. I'm really, Julie, you want to add to that? Or Peter?
So not addressing directly the question that the schools are doing, but giving a answer that says why I have hope. About four years ago, my family went off for summer vacation in Washington DC in what my daughter came to call Why America Sucks Vacation. And there's a legitimate reason for her to have had that expression about what happened. The very, very nice hotel which we stayed, if you went a walk and a half, there was a monument to all the prisoners of war, basically, American citizens who were held by their own government when the American government decided the Japanese were somehow other and dangerous. And then because my wife and my daughter are Jewish, we went off to the American Holocaust museum. And the way we're very much true, we had the entire time, DC was, it's horrible. Perhaps given the theme, that was appropriate somehow, I don't know. But there we saw in graphic detail how the United States deliberately kept German Jews who had Eastern European Jews who were trying to escape from the Nazis, away from America. And it wasn't just the American Anglo-Saxon modestists who were doing this. American Jews were part of that too, because they were a different kind of Jew. They came from a different part of Europe. And they saw this influx of Eastern Jews as a threat. There's lots and lots of that just go around. Nobody is sheltered from it or protected with it. And then thanks to the help of Coach, I was able to get the ultimate and unattainable tickets, the, the ultimate show, or actually the second ultimate show, um, in Washington DC at that time, which was tickets to the African-American museum, which at that time you couldn't, history museum, you couldn't get into unless you had a connection. Fortunately, I knew somebody and they just able to put the arm on the wall of the congressman and like, actually we had tickets, which was, was lovely. And I got to experience how the history of uh, the mistreatment of the African in America, based back to 1500. That's a long time for people to be denied their central identity, excuse me, a very long time. So to cap this off, I uh, and my wife and uh, my daughter. She didn't know it, but we took her to dinner saying we're going to go to a a performance at the Kennedy Center that actually was going on, but we weren't going to go to. A woman from Afghanistan, she sang jazz and heard it. And she was going to be saying, amazingly, she did try to kill us. But we went and had an amazingly wonderful dinner at.
Sorry, Peter, this is, can I talk?
It is. We went and had an amazing dinner at the Kennedy Center. And then we went down and saw Hamilton, a show written by a Puerto Rican American about the founding white slave-owning founders of this country, in which the performances were carried out by people of color. And it was a show not about hate and resentment and revenge. It was hope. And in fact, there are people there. And that despite the fact that we have broken that promise over and over and over again, that all men are created equal, it's still there at the central core part of our community and our culture. And so we have the conversation this town about race and just how we treat minorities. And the reason to have hope despite all of the evidence.
Yes.
Thank you. So I moved to West Hartford, I grew up in Norwich, I moved there in 2018, right? So uh, but the strategic plan that kind of came into government after that happened, you know? I've been reminded often as chair about this strategic plan and that we need to do more on it. So certainly that's always on my mind. And I think it's good that, you know, uh, whatever the origin of it is with, you know, things like that, we're still talking. And Coach mentioned, you know, we're not all the way there, but you know, we're making progress towards it and no one's forgotten. So I think that's really important. The other thing that I think is important about being able to have these conversations is that in my view, you know, the board were policy makers, right? And so we have to set policies that affect people in the town, right? And if we're not able to sort of relate or understand how different policies affect different people, you know, we're not really doing like our best job. And it may not be because we're prejudiced or anything, it may just be that we're unaware, right? So two quick stories, like uh, I don't know if you've ever seen the TV show Good Times, that was the seventies classic. But I remember an episode where there's a kid, right? And he fails a test. And the test question that he failed was, when your family had guests over, where do they sleep? And he wrote in the bathroom. And that was wrong because what the school was looking for was like in the guest bed, right? And for some reason that kind of like just spoke to me, that I never really would have thought about it from that perspective, you know? How that answer could be considered wrong in one way, um, but absolutely the correct answer in another, right? So it's being able to like relate and empathize with people that I think is important. The other one was, I think it was when I was about eighteen, uh, there was a constitutional amendment in Vermont to update the constitution's language to be gender inclusive. Um, and I remember the time I was like eighteen, so I was like, you know, this has been around since seventeen seventy-seven, you know, why do we always go back and change history like that? And my mom just came up and said, you know, if you were a parent, you had a daughter, and she came up and said, this doesn't, this doesn't speak to me, this doesn't cover me, how would you feel? And I was like eighteen, you know, so I was cavalier about a lot of things, but that really struck me in that moment. It just is like my perspective changed entirely, right? And so that's out of like talking to other people and learning about them and thinking about things that generally, you know, I wouldn't conceive of. So I do think, you know, this work we do here, meeting together, the work we do to try to implement the plan, the training that select board is done. I mean, it all serves a greater purpose, which I think in the end, in our roles as here, is to, you know, be able to enact policies that, you know, don't do unnecessary harm because we're not aware of what we're doing. And, you know, can really be something that affect in a positive way that the entire.
Can you keep that as I want to ask a follow-up to?
Sure.
So I just appreciating, because I know we're a little bit off our agenda, but um, because what's so interesting to me is when I said this earlier about how everyone in this room has a different lived experience, like there's how many people here, say there's fifty people, there's fifty different stories, right? There's fifty different ways that you come into your role as municipal leaders, that you come into your role as school board leaders, that I come into my role and the work that I do. And we can't forget, and Peter, your story is powerful, because I think what you were saying was that informs how you're also understanding what it means to do this work in the town of Hartford and what it means in your role as a school board. And so, you know, one of our community engagements earlier was asking people to tell their stories as a way of understanding how we can't separate ourselves from our lived experiences and how they are so formative, whether it happens at three or whether it happens at fifteen eight. So I think that's one thing I wanted to say is very powerful. And one of the things I want to ask you, Mike, is, because I think you've, you know, touched on this, is when you think about aspirations for your select board that you're the chair of,
Yeah.
and I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but can you even just imagine or envision like one or two aspirations for the select board or your colleagues and you around your work and relationship to what it means to do that sort of work? Or what the strategic plan, and again, there's additions and revisions and things that could happen. But what are some aspirations that you have?
So I think that what I'd like to see the board do, and I think these come, you know, very closely related to strategic plans is that, you know, it's not even like, uh, we're not even necessarily talking about like race or diversity or equity. Like a lot of this is like recommendations for good government, right? Like we have a policy on policies, right? So we know where, we, we know how we're going to keep policies, where they're held, how we find them, you know, how they apply to people, something like that, right? A communications officer is another one, right? How do we communicate to the rest of the community, um, you know, about what we're doing and make government more transparent and accountable? Um, and I think that those are things that have come out of some of the recommendations from each core that we've, we've been working on and want to keep doing, you know, other things like that, you know, like we just put in some dedicated funding for the Juneteenth celebration, right? Um, so that's something that we can, can do every year, you know? It's like by doing that, you know, and uh, that's an opportunity for the select board to help fund events that bring people to you, right? So it's not just that, but it's other things, you know, out there like uh, sort of celebrations, you know, kind of like to get people there. So it's like, I'd like our select board to continue to work to be, you know, accountable, transparent. And that these things like, you know, getting someone to, to work on communications, that's important, you know, getting a policy, getting someone in there to figure out what policies we even have, you know? Like those seem like basic sort of bedrock principles and accountabilities that we can work on, you know? And the fact that they do seem to dovetail with recommendations in the strategic plan is, is great, you know, it kind of all, it all sort of works together. So I think those are some of the things that I would personally like to see why I think, you know, the board is committed to continue, uh, continuing to try and implement parts of the strategic plan.
I want to, I want to invite other select board members also to, to.
Thank you. Trying to also manage public comment. Um, yeah, thanks, Mike, in this question. I mean, also as a point of clarification, um, the policy on policies is very much aspirational at this point. Um, just to make that clear, um, that was a recommendation coming from Harvard Community on Racial Equity and Inclusion. Know some folks in that committee are here and can speak to that, but um, you know, to really, again, how can we actually have a policy on on policy? So it's accessible, it's clear, people from the community, not just to those who are governing, but also to our community. Even something as simple as how can folks in our community hop on the website and be able to find um, a policy that they're looking for? So it's things at that, that basic level that um, that really help the wellbeing and the communication in our town as a whole. And to follow up on aspiration, something that I've been thinking about in terms of, you know, being honest about some of the challenges, at least from my perspective, um, on the board and implementing this work is this select board doesn't have strategic visions and goals at this time. We haven't had a, a board retreat or we haven't had a visioning process. I think the last time there was a strategic vision um outlined at this one board level was back in twenty eighteen. There is a very like well-crafted document around, you know, goals for infrastructure, goals for different areas of the town and values. But we haven't actually done that collectively as a group. And so something that I'd be hopeful of is to, is to do that. And also that when doing so, we're looking through, through every aspect of that prominence of equity. Because equity is related to infrastructure, to paving, to, you know, these are mutually exclusive issues to really support the health and the wellbeing of our town. So um, would welcome, you know, now or in the future, further conversations and your wisdoms, uh, the school board and the school district on policies that have worked really well, um, what some of those impacts that you've seen of those policies are that can, you know, guide us collectively as decision makers.
Thank you. I'm a neophyte as far as being a select board member. And I have been a teacher for thirty years, from fifth grade all the way up to junior college. One of the things that um, that I think is so important, both for myself and for whatever work we both do for our community, is a lot of what we've been talking about, being open-minded, being willing to learn something new. And sometimes what we learn, um, as we stated, is very uncomfortable. I think what was, I never, you know, I've always known about race. Ever since growing up in Omaha, Nebraska, in the race fights, in that, in that town. Um, but it didn't come home to hit me quite so hard, and I'm surprised, was until I adopted my daughter from China thirty years ago. And it hasn't been that long ago, a little over a year ago, that my daughter was in between jobs and she was she was doing four part-time jobs. And one of her part-time jobs was at a restaurant in White River Junction, where the owner, and I'm very emotional about this, where the owner, every time she went back to the kitchen to bring the food to her clients, he would say just loud enough for her to hear Chinese spiders. And when she came home and told me about that, I was just blown away. It was like it had hit me personally. Because of course, I never think about her as being Chinese, she's my daughter. And that, you know, it just kind of made me realize we have a lot of work to do. And I'm not, um, you know, I don't condemn that person to a certain extent, but this is an adult. This is a person we were talking earlier about children and when children bring on prejudices and how we work with them. But we do have, as we all know, we have adults that we have to work with. And I just, um, my personal goal, both for myself and for being on the, the, the select board, is for us to try and before making a cart launch decision, think about it. Yes, we have to make decisions based on our personal experiences because that's who we are and that's what some of our job is. But to also be there and to listen. And I think that's the hardest thing, is to listen, you know? It may not change me right away, but I try very hard to listen and to offer um, where I can. There are some people who refuse to talk about some of these issues and refuse to talk about where they stand. And I think that's, for me, that's the hardest part. I don't quite know where to go with that. And I have heard, over the years, I have heard some people say, some people who have backgrounds in psychiatry and philosophy of education, okay, you just stop talking to that person. philosophy of education, okay, you just stop talking to that person. I can't do that. I can't do that, you know, I will try and hope, and I think hope is what we all hold on to. But I really do think it's important, no matter what your age, to learn something new and to open yourself up to, you know, you may it may not change your mind, but to try something different and go from there.
Would you want to speak it up, Neil?
So just wanted to um touch some touch on this idea of being open to the way we find solutions. I wonder if we've identified some of the right problems, but we haven't yet found the solution, and that's why we're here. And in like they when Mike's mentioning the policy and policies, the communications office or processes, these things totally make sense to me. And I think that government uh document, these constitutions, these documents should be living adaptive documents and processes to the societies that we live in. Um I have had a tough time both understanding and then also communicating this question, which is why should these very valid questions about policy and policies and communications come out of a joint committee on racial equity versus a broader committee on equity in some? Because which would then also, of course, include racial equity. Um one of my great concerns and experiences personally, I guess we talk about personal experiences, is um this happened both in my family with my siblings, but it has also happened between races and um sort of chirping, you'll hear, I think a really good example of that is the the white frustrations against um affirmative action. So whether it's real or it's perceived benefit being given to selected classes, creating resentment against the people who are not in that selective class. Um and I think about kids where if you had two kids in a household, one of whom for maybe very real reasons needs more parental support and attention and resource, um how that can easily cause hard feelings in the other child, even inadvertently? And so no one's done anything wrong in that process, but now you have one child that's actually maybe more resentful of the other child. And I sometimes worry being in the the body of a my racial minority, but also having family members who are in bodies of racial minorities, that if we are overly prescriptive and, you know, definition of who is a protected class and that being singularly around race, that people who also need help, this could be queers, it could be people who are poor, it could be uh people who are physically disabled, any number of other groups, may rightfully or wrongly interpret that as racial minorities alone getting the preferential treatment. And that resentment not being directed or that frustration not being expressed towards us policymakers, but being directed at the ground level towards peers who don't deserve that. And so I wonder if there's a way that we can say, look, we really do need to solve some of these issues. I mean, I've definitely been on the receiving end of uh racial trafficking and it sucks. And uh I think the thing is, we have to admit that we cannot govern free speech, even if free speech sometimes sucks. So what is within our control as policymakers? And is there a way that we can fully acknowledge the core tenets of the strategic plan, which is talking about some of these hidden prejudices or these ignorances or straight-up racism? Um but can we do it in a way that we're also making sure to be the most effective? And my proposal, I think at this point, would be that we consider um expanding the scope of each quarry to being uh equity broadly, which would continue the mandate of racial equity, which is prescribed in the strategic plan, but also making sure that they then have the greater power and empowerment and latitude to explore some of these things like the policy on policies, because, and I'll wrap up here. If you see someone in the community say, okay, great, so we have new policies that are being implemented, let's say this is like a policy on policies or communications. The the paperwork through meeting minutes and through recorded Zoom meetings is that this has come through each quarry, the committee on racial equity. We all understand the nuances that areas beyond that, it was a good idea, it came from very involved citizens that we've now adopted more broadly. So we all understand. The average citizen may not understand that and may think that, oh, so this committee on racial equity gets to decide rules for the rest of us. But meanwhile, there is no queer equity committee or there is no physically disabled equity committee, there is no poverty committee. And I think that that could cause us trouble down the road.
Can I speak to that first?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah, and what I wanted to do is just because I'm trying to stay a little bit, I'm not always good about staying on the on this on the schedule as some of you know, but um I think this could be a nice tradition. Joe, we can go to you. And then Sarah, what you could take the mic and then would you be happy to do the update around each quarter? And then we could move a little bit to like, just to pause and give some time to the public, if there's any Q and A or comments from the public. Okay, great.
Thank you. One of the things about H Quarry and what it is tried to do is, one, it's an advisory committee. It is not an action committee. What we do is that we advise both the school board as well as the select board on things to do. And one of those things is the strategic plan, which in that had identified a couple of things, policy on policy and the uh public information officer. So in trying to do that and trying to carry out our mission, we attack those particular um items. So I I'm wondering as an advisory committee whose charge is to do that and then do it and then do the work for it and then get blamed for doing the work for it, I think is an issue. And it's not H Quarry's issue. I think it is a broader issue. I understand what you're you're absolutely saying. Actually, I agree with you. I think we should um broaden our uh our scope. But once again, that is not H Quarry's, H Quarry was commissioned by both select board and school board. So don't look at H Quarry. What what's the old saying? When you point your finger at one, you have three pointing at yourself? I think that's the case. It's the select board and school board to understand, okay, do we need to broaden it? So that that's the the first thing. H Quarry is only doing what its charge is saying to do.
I totally understand that.
Um to your point, and I I have, it 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 did take me back a little bit. H Quarry did the work to get a public information officer. I I don't, I don't think anyone in this room can say that communication in this town is tremendous. Given that, what H Quarry did was went to the Tuck School and and Sarah did a tremendous job with this, went to the Tuck School, uh had their uh students interview people within the town, do the research, get the data, how we can improve our communication. Get the funding for it that you and your colleagues voted on and approved and the town approved. And so H Quarry did its job. And whether it came from H Quarry or it came from uh the climate change, climate uh action committee or any committee to, that's the thing that I have tremendous issue with. It doesn't matter where it came from. Did it solve an issue? And is is that a problem for H Quarry? Or is it a problem for the general population to understand, hey, and one of the things you said was real or perceived? Real or perceived? We can come up and we say this really, this has nothing really to do with race, but we're solving an issue. But because it came from H Quarry, and you're absolutely right, because someone said that to me, and I, like I said, was taken back. Is it H Quarry's issue? So I challenge both school board and select board to look at our charge and to say, is it broad enough? Some would say no, some would say yes. I think that is for your debate, but here's the thing that H Quarry is going to continue to do, the work. The work to move us forward. And and I I have no issue, and once again, we are an advisory committee. We we have no power to do any action. But we will advise both school board and select board and what the best options are to move uh an item forward. What you do with it is on you, Sarah.
Thank you. Um Joe said most of what I wanted to say.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um but I do want to directly address your concern. So I've been on four eight for six years, uh almost seven, and I'm the chair for the last two. And we've had this conversation three distinct times. And almost every time, we go all the way around and we come back to the fact that there are lots and lots of specialty committees. The climate action committee is not on oil and gas and electric cars and heating, I mean, like there have, you have to put bargains on things. And when you broaden equity conversations really broadly, white women win. The research is just enormous. And I I I it's not that I don't want to be a winning white lady, but I I really want us to be able to say that we are looking at this work through a lens that is much deeper than just how can we make people feel comfortable. And that is what ends up happening when you water down stuff to the point where you're only looking at like, how do we make the most people feel good about this stuff? And so if we keep our focus on the most um, the most specific thing we can, everything above that gets attention as well. Do you know what I'm saying? And I may not be very eloquent about this, but we are, we do have this on our agenda. We've actually pushed it back a couple of times because it is like a ninety-minute discussion and not a discussion we can have as a ten-minute bullet point on our agenda. Um and so we are not ignoring your 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 top, your point, and we we've had this discussion several times and we all have various degrees of of opinion on it. And so I just want you to know that we address you, we hear you, and we've also came to this place both in our original charge and in our reformative charges after much thorough debate and conversation about that very thing. So I don't want you to think that we have not had that conversation. We really are looking at this from a like, what place can we really focus on where we know that we're catching as many people as we can? Does that help? I mean, that's my perspective. I'll start from the high. Um and then just as far as the inquiry update, like a lot of the things that we've been working on have been mentioned. Um I was on the original group that wrote the RFP for Mary's work. Um so we really did kind of start this this work moving forward. Um and Mike has mentioned the policy on policies. That work came out of our uh charge to look at all of our policies through a lens of equity. And because we discovered we couldn't find them, um that actually led us to like, where are our policies stored? And then if they're stored, what are the rules and what's the format? So our work does all start from the strategic plan places. But in order to like raise all ships, rising tides, raise all ships, we really are finding ourselves starting at very fundamental basic places in order to even get to where we would like, the work we would like to do. Um so with all of that being said, oh, my so Fox, um Juneteenth is coming up uh this weekend. We are also doing it with the um City of Lebanon's Diversity Commission. Um the bridge was being decorated this afternoon between our two communities. Um they have an event on Monday, a movie and some educational opportunities as well. Please, please join us in Lemon Point. We might not get rain for that two and a half hours. And um and now I'm gonna officially get my notes because I was talking from others. Um the community stage review, we were also, uh that was also a recommendation that we made. Uh that RFP has now been approved and I think is either close to being posted or has been posted. Excellent. Thank you, Elaine, Mike, for noting your notes. Um the public information officer, we can't speak enough about, um I've listened in this room from people from every background that um there is that we are bad at it. Um so that we would really like, I know that there's been discussion about having that position filled by a new town manager, but we cannot stress enough that we would love the interim funds to be spent on some consulting work to get us started and to help that person coming to a job successfully. Um I'm not sure I would want to take that job with no framework and no structure. Um so that's our recommendation. Um and then the last thing we really want to do is we really want to engage with you guys more. Um we've been incredibly focused on town. Um it it's just where the fires were and I apologize. Um and so we want to make sure that we are staying engaged with you. How can we support you? Is there research? Is there work that we can do? Um we got a lot of willing people and we kind of hit uh not hit, um we reached a place where a lot of the our hot action items are now in up in other people's hands and would love um to take on some new challenges. I think that's it for me.
That's a good question.
Of course.
So just when you were talking about how focusing, keeping the mission scope.
I'm I'm sorry, keep giving the microphone.
It usually happens.
The the mission, keeping the mission scope focused on race allows for depth at work. And then you also talked about how uh trying to reach the and serve the broadest number of people. To me, it feels like broadening the scope and empowering um the the committee to take on equity in various forms will be a broader audience of people served. So I guess I'm sort of like trying to understand the um the difference there.
I'm not an expert under any circumstances. Um could you help me with this? Absolutely.
So uh I was, when we came into this meeting, desperately afraid that we were going to end up into it's sort of the virtuous school board has done all these marvelous things and still this left board is still lagging behind and so forth. Because it's not about who's better at this than who's worse. It's all of us to be at a question. The message I would have is, let's get going. Let's move. Let's do things. Some of the whole work, some of it will be surprising in a positive way. But let's just get going.
On what?
Whatever it is that they have suggested, that you have come up, that we do whatever it is that's going to move this conversation forward. I mentioned the fact that we went to the African-American history museum in Washington DC and you asked us this other thing, who's Hartford? That's our history. That is not a separate part of America that we were never part of. We as the New Englanders, we probably weren't here at the time, good for you. Uh we're just as engaged in the slave trade as the people who were selling and buying people on these streets in Charleston, South Carolina were. We were running the ships. We were trading molasses for sugar or sugar for molasses for people. That's all part of what is, this is all our collective history. And collectively, we need to move five hundred years of history into reverse as we move forward.
Sarah, do you want to say a little bit more about in response to? And can I just, just one quick thing on that, just in terms of a process point?
Where are we on the agenda?
Hold on one second. Um is, you know, one of the things I always say is um that we have to also be comfortable with the fact that we're not, we will not, we won't get to closure, right? So I think like we have some divergent opinions about the mission of H Quarry. I appreciate Sarah, you know, what your perspective is and how you're sharing that. I just want to be sure that we're not trying to solve that tonight.
No, I just, no, I just didn't understand.
And I appreciate that we're having the conversation, so.
So I'm not an expert and I'm by no means a scholar. I'm an interested party member who really wants to do this work. And my personal opinion is that if we try to do everything for everyone, we won't do anything. And so if we, Ma, please give me a thought.
Oh, I just, um so my neighbor who was still younger ever, uh every graduate at her school, but um she would always say, we need to look at the most marginalized people, we need to look at everyone. So I think this is a much longer conversation. I have a lot of thoughts on this. So I'm already getting it right now, but I think holding that as sort of the base of what we're saying, which can be kind of these more and more detailed, um the base of what we're saying, which can be kind of these more and more detailed, um, in teaching.
But that, that's kind of what I was trying to say.
I love having a student voice. Thank you.
Well, I'll be quick because I'm going more with the solution. And I think.
Yeah, we're moving there.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I was with Rocket initially when the first thing came up. By listening to Joe, listening to Sarah, my mind has been changed. But as you go forth with the charter, I think an expression of that very point would go a long way to help bridge why H. Corey is doing what it is, but does support all sorts, all sorts of equity. And I think Joe has another important point, that there needs to be a better collaboration between both boards on giving the committee a charge for the year, saying this is where we could use some help. Type thing, not limited to that, but as an advisory committee, that seems to be your rule.
Okay.
Clarify.
Yeah, we're going to do one more clarification.
I'm just confused because I actually, when I hear Joe, I agree with Joe. And so my original statement is actually.
It must be a holiday.
Because I, my comment is directed to the select board and the school board, which is determined, which is charged with determining the charge of H. Corey. And so for me, it's more of this question of the branding. I think H. Corey has the, the most invested and active citizens of all our committees maybe combined. And, and so when, when Joe says that they are following the mandate of their charge, I think they are doing that with excellence. I mean, you've won A-plus effort. I think H. Corey typifies that. So my comment is more to, between boards, in this conversation between boards, about how do we go about addressing our management and governance through H. Corey and the branding by which those policies then go out into our community? And so one of the things, so when Joe says, when I hear correctly, is that we agree that H. Corey's mandate should be expanded and should be empowered.
And, and I'm sorry, it's okay for us to disagree, to listen and to, to collaborate. And I think I, I absolutely, and I, I keep asking for the mic and then I don't talk with the mic as well, but it. Thank you. I, I, I think it's so important to, to disagree. And that's okay because we're trying to get to a point, we just have different roads to get there. And it, and it's all right to do that. If you listen closely, you know, Sarah and I didn't say exactly the same thing. And that's all right. And we'll get there. But we're, we're trying to get to a point. And, and Lanny is, um, looking at me because we're off topic and the agenda's on ahead.
And just to let you know, y'all, this is our, this is where we are. And we're actually somehow, we're sort of on time. We are shifting things a little bit because what we want to do is, and we can't do it because of all the laws and policies. We wanted to create opportunities for smaller conversations and small group conversations. So we'll, we'll hold that for another time. What I would like to move us to is, it's as soon as any public comment, but just get into your heads before we move to that, is to talk about, which I think Rocket and Joe and Sarah and others are, and Peter and Russell, are beginning to get us to think about is what are these future areas of collaboration? So like, what does that really look like? And maybe we can talk about some concrete examples of that. So when we meet tonight, we feel that we have some pathway forward. So I'm going to hold a minute for, yeah, Lanny?
An observation. So one of the difficulties that I have had expressed to me within the town of Hartford from my constituents, I guess you'd say, is that we have less than, I want to say 1% of our population in the town of Hartford that identifies as LGBTQ or from, um, or follow a race category. And and I don't know what the exact number is. Maybe 5%, but what's been expressed to me is that we seem to focus an extreme amount of work in the town based on this categorization. And well, I agree that a rising tide lifts all ships. A lot of my constituents, quite frankly, feel that we spend too much effort looking at this through a racial lens instead of as a, through a lens, as Rocket would place it, to lift everybody up. And that, I think, is the biggest divide that we still face in the town of Hartford. Is that we're looking, we have groups in the town of Hartford that look at this um, need for growth through, through a racial lens instead of as a whole town lens. Rocket's famous line he likes to say is, what about the poor white folks? And, uh, we have some poor white folks in this town of Hartford. And they're certainly not that, you know, they're a race category too. And we have to look at what we can do for everyone in town. And that's the problem that I, that I think we're facing. And Joe is so anxious to rebut me on this, so.
No, I am though.
Okay. Hi. Yeah. Um, I hear you, Lanny, because I hear some of those, um, comments as well. And I, I think there's a couple of ways to, to look at it. And one of the reasons is until we are a genuinely like welcoming and inclusive community to folks who, um, don't fall in that predominantly white category, then we will always be, we, we will not improve our diversity. Like there is, um, it's not necessarily just about, uh, giving attention to the small percentage of racial minorities. Um, I don't know if anyone has an actual percentage of LGBTQ, uh, members of our community, but regardless, we're never going to increase the diversity in our town unless we are explicitly a welcoming and engaging community. And I just wanted to make sure that was explicit. Thank you.
So it's telling. She's jumping a bit.
Did you want to respond to the?
Lanny, something that you said actually did strike a nerve. You said your constituents, yours consist, your constituents is all 10,686 people. All of them. All of them. That's the first thing. Second thing is when you say that you focus, what work have you done that has taken away from or has excluded the other, the, I think, um, last census said that 97% of this town is white. What, what work have you done, or that H. Corey has done, or anyone has done, school board, that has taken away from the work? The building bridges, VA cutoff, the roads getting paved, the snowplows, uh, and public works doing their job? I'm just curious, what work has been taken away from? Because I, I don't see, actually, I've seen work that has tried to better all 10,686 people because we've tried to improve communication, because we've tried to enact policy on policy. Rocket said something that I, I pointed at, uh, earlier, perception and reality.
I think this is an excellent example of why there's a communication act is needed, why there's a strategic plan needed. Because, and I can't speak to the select board and our motivations, but by being a more inclusive community, we will increase, have a better chance of increasing our population, which then reduces your school tax, raises property values type thing. So there is an interest in everybody in the town of Hartford for being more inclusive.
I think Colin Butler made a good statement at the lack, less lackward, yeah, last select board meeting. And then he stated, it was great to see us focusing on infrastructure and town issues. And, uh, that's, perception is that, be right or wrong, perception is that the town's not focusing enough on town-related issues and more on social issues.
Always right. Last 20 minutes of the evening.
No, I, I would just be, you know, I would just ask that everyone go back and look at select board agendas. Go back as, as far as you want, right? I mean, the idea that we don't focus on town issues first is frankly preposterous, whatever the perceptions. We gave, you know, we funded the roads. There's more money there than the public works feeding us, you know? Most of our time is doing the budget and doing stuff like that, appointing people to committees. These things come up pretty rarely and it's usually someone from the public comes in and doesn't like the fact that we're talking about funding select board training for us, right? So we do that. And then we pass the budget for other stuff. We award the paving contracts and set the peace capital, you know? The idea that we're just sitting around, you know, just talking about social issues instead of doing something else, just, it just bugs me.
I, I would love to just comment briefly. I would love if we could, next time we actually have numbers prepared in advance. Because there's a lot of like guesswork that's happening about what the actual numbers are. Uh, so I think that would be helpful for all of us in our conversation. One of the things that I want to be really, uh, I would love to see numbers on is the number of kids that come to Hartford High or through the Hartford School District, um, from food insecure homes. And, um, I, I think that's something, an area of opportunity where we could work further. So, but this is Lanny to push back a little bit to say that that is in many ways a social issue, it's an economic issue. Um, and I think it's one that transcends race because no matter what household a kid comes from or what they look like, they deserve to be fed well. Um, and, um, I think, um, one of the, one of the problems of being, when we look, um, at equity through a specific lens, in this case, race, we can end up being over-inclusive in some cases for people who don't need the protection. And we can be under-inclusive for people who do need support. And so I think if we really dive to what Molly said, is lifting up the people who are most marginalized, I think it'd be really important for us as a, two leadership boards to identify what are the actual tangible parameters by which we are measuring our success and failure within our community? And is it incidents of bullying? I mean, that is a concerning aspect of the strategic plan is the race-driven bullying. Is it hunger? Is it police calls per neighborhood? And that was broken down for us on our upcoming board. I mean, I feel like right now, it's so easy for us to get heated in our own perspectives and this conjecture of, and, uh, we're just, like at some point, it's like, what is the actual ground truth reality that we're dealing with here in Hartford? Which, which ones do we prioritize as two boards? And then how do we best empower this like, uh, delta force of committees to go and tackle it? Because I, and I, I realize that sometimes where I'm saying this can seem like I'm being critical of H. Corey. I'm not. It's actually more of, um, trying to reimagine the branding of it so that we can get more community buy-in and actually materially as leadership boards target these specific numbers and track them over time.
Rocket, I feel like you also just started to get a little bit of like, what would be some hopes for collaboration? I'm going to go to Sarah and then to Tom.
I just want to say that, um, social infrastructure is as important to us as human beings, as bridges and roads. And so they're not mutually exclusive activities. Creating things that, um, live as, as humans are just as important as not driving to a pothole. And I don't like the distinction that like, when we are talking about making our town better and better for our citizens, that that somehow implies that that is in lieu of the VA cutoff run.
Thank you. I just want to make sure folks remember, uh, one point thing. Both five years ago, we sat around tables like this and we came up with the idea of doing the strategic plan. You know, and we interviewed three or four firms and look where we are now. Maybe we're not where we want to be, but we're somewhere. We're further along than we were. And I, I really hope that we focus on, okay, so what's the next step? You know, one of the big next step for me that I've seen clear in the schools is we've made it a little bit more welcoming. But how do we make people want to stay? How do we make it part of the fabric that is Hartford? How do we make sure folks are comfortable, really want to hang around here, that don't just come and go, yeah, I felt welcomed, but you know, maybe it really wasn't as deep as I thought. I, I really want to be, you know, comfortable. I want to put my roots down here and stay in Hartford. I've seen a lot of like really cool stuff happen, but we need to go that step further now and make it like the reality. So I just hope that we get to that next step. Maybe there's, you know, a strategic plan or some data taken on where we are and who the folks are that are most marginalized and how we push that forward, how do we do that? So I, I do think we're in a different place. We've just got some concrete steps we should take forward.
Better you than me.
One, I think Rocket, you're entirely right. If we don't measure, we can't improve. That's a basic fundamental rule of all the improvement programs, no matter what they are. So it is important to measure. But there needs to be an understanding that when we're looking at numbers, we're not talking a zero-sum game. There, it becomes too easy to say, oh, 5% of the population is this, or 7% of the population is this. And that by doing something for that 5% or for that 7%, you are somehow discriminating against the remaining person in the population. And if it's about who gets the Christmas turkey because we're hitting them out to the good members of the community and those of the bad members of the community, that's very, very true. But if it's about something that we do, such as be aware of how racist that bullying is part of our overall approach and trying to figure out how we're going to stand bullying out of the schools. There are stories that I can't talk about because they involve our students. But the way race becomes part of bullying is something that affects the overall atmosphere of the school and bullying in the school. And by affecting one, I'm affecting the other. And I've used this analogy many, many times and I apologize to those who've already heard it. But I like to go to the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Sorry?
The Americans with Disabilities Act, which could be viewed in its narrowest sense of only affecting those with disabilities. The problem is twofold with that analysis. One, all of us eventually become disabled in some way. All of us are eventually, whether through accident, disease, or just simple rage, going to be less well able to perform than we were before. The other is the adaptations that we make to enable those who are disabled to function in our society, allow the rest of us to function in our society better. The person who's supposed to be carriage with all their groceries and their two children across the street and who can go up and down those curb ramps is just as well benefiting, perhaps even more than the person who was in a wheelchair that didn't get across the street either. So some of these things actually are much more than zero-sum game.
I need to remember too, that disabilities are not just physical disabilities. Hey, we've got kids in our school that have, uh, struggled for many, many years. Peter and I are very familiar with, with, with several of them. And you, if you're looking at them, well, look at Rodney. Man, he's so smart. But he's struggling and struggling and struggling just to get homework turned in. He's done the homework and it's down in the bottom of his briefcase when he gets to school the next day. And it's down in the bottom of his briefcase. So the second day and the third day and the fourth day and the fifth day now is our, now is a month behind. The school's calling mom and dad saying, hey, your kids have turned in the homework. And you as a parent go, I saw this kid doing the homework. You go to your child, child, and you say, why didn't you turn homework in? And they go, I don't know. I did it. We have kids like that and some of it belongs to ADHD. And this is a real hard thing. And this is a real hard thing because we always did it was the little boys that had ADHD. And it's not just the little boys that have it. It's not just the people that are, I guess it's still, you know, I gotta bitch, you know, I gotta get up and, oh, I gotta go for a walk, oh, 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 I gotta have a drink, oh, oh, oh. You've got kids that are suffering from anxiety and depression and it's because of the ADHD. You don't see that. So we've got, I think, we are, in this district, we are approaching this and we are taking care of this. We're saying, yeah, we know we've got kids out there that have something, a disability, and it is classified as a disability now. That you don't see. And if you might think, oh, this kid's just off the, off the walls today. So we just wanna remember that there are other, other disabilities other than the physical disabilities, especially with our kiddos that, that we're taking all these policies for.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Michelle Bolesky, White River Junction, former committee member of HQory. And I first of all, like to thank past and former members of HQory, Aline, Kim, John, Pat, Miriam, Sarah, Joe, Molly. If I left anyone out, I apologize. So my observation is that both boards are leaving these people hanging. There's no direction and it's really extremely frustrating. And I'm, I'm just gonna be honest. And it's your, it's your committee. It's the board's committee. So Joe is right and thank you, Joe, for pointing that out. So my question is now, why is there a joint committee? You guys are only gonna meet once every four years. What's the point of having a joint committee? So I'm gonna throw that out there, you don't have to answer me, but I'm just curious. Because I think that you have to make a commitment to this committee and the work as boards and you have to, you have to meet at least once a year and support the people that are doing the work. And another suggestion I'm gonna have, I'm, I made, I've made before, is that I think one of the solutions for the select board is, you know, here we go with another committee, but to actually create a committee on policies. So, and it could be people from HQory, you know, but, and I know, Ally, you created an amazing, amazing policy for committees and thank you for that. And, and because I think until that work is done, you know, the work of the strategic plan is done, talking about expansion is just, you know, it's just being, you know, distracting. And, 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 and I, I wonder how many people have read it? I wonder how many people have gone to an HQory meeting that are speaking tonight? And because I have and I went, when I was on the board, every single meeting because I was committed to that work. And so I, I would like people to figure out what has us tonight? What have we done as a select board, as a school board? What have we accomplished regards to the strategic plan? Cause we've had these conversations for four years. And, you know, I'm like, get, get to work, please. Look at the strategic plan, what have you done? What do you need to do? We, you guys desperately need a communication director because it, and even if we have one, people are gonna talk and they're gonna complain because that's what people do, right? They're gonna complain, myself included, right? Probably one of the biggest complainers. But, and I admit it. But because I see the possibilities of what this town can be and I get so frustrated. And that's why I complain, because I get so frustrated because we've got all these great things in place. And, and yes, I know, Coach, you're right about, you know, the wheels of justice take a long time, but I mean, we're, we're going like two miles an hour here and I think we can speed it up a little bit. So anyway, I'm done. Thank you for letting me share. I'm not gonna interrupt again, but I.
Thanks, Michelle. We are closing in on the end of our time together. I have a few points that I would like to make just to kind of button up a few things that were said, but I wonder if there's any other input or thoughts from anyone before we do that?
I don't know whose role this should be, maybe the chairs or something, but I think it would be great to figure out a timeline and at the very least, or a process by which we're gonna identify problems. Because I think there's no point in trying to find solutions if we haven't really specifically identified what we're trying to solve. And, you know, Peter, I, when you think about it more, I understand your point about this historical context. How does that play out in Hartford? What is the data? Like, we can't use late data that's seven years old, 10 years old of racist incident that was 12, 13 percent. What's happening now? What are the problems? And then how do we collectively work towards that? So I don't know what that process is, but I would love to figure out how we're first gonna identify the problems.
To, to respond to that, I think, and actually we mentioned, or Sarah mentioned it briefly as far the HQory updates is, I think our community safety review is an opportunity to do that. Because that is, you know, not just about, I can talk about it, it's not just about, you know, police and fire, the things you might typically think of as public safety, but what is the health and wellbeing and what contributes to the health and wellbeing in the fabric of the community? So the intention of that is to have folks who are really seasoned and, and expert at speaking to our most vulnerable community members, which we might not often hear from, to help us identify what those problems are. Folks who might not necessarily have time to, and the time and the privilege to come to a select board meeting, you know, 6:00 PM on a Tuesday or a school board meeting on a Wednesday. So I think that's a really strong attempt to actually get some of that data and see where we are. And here for a lot of different folks in conversations, in groups, that's where I think is the intention.
Two seconds. There, there's a lot of data that school board has and that the select board has, police calls, literacy rates, assisted meals, pickup, whatever. How do we compile that in as well? But just to, I think the, I have been sold on the merits of the community safety review, what is also within our power and capacity as boards that we have immediate access to to identify these problems?
Can I chime in also?
Yes, go ahead, Kim, and then Sarah.
Okay, thanks. When, I mean, I do think there are, I mean, what you're talking about a little bit is just economic development and there are, I mean, the Hartford Community Coalition probably does have some of those other statistics around meals and things like that. Technically poverty, as prevalent as it is in this culture with the wealth gap as such as it is, is not, poverty is not a protected class. So that's, back, also just to address the problems and solution question, which often comes up, I think we can look at it, just reframe it to consider it being not problems and solution, but challenges and opportunities. And we have a challenge of a lack of diversity in our community, other than socioeconomic diversity, we have some of that, but ethnic racial diversity is lacking. And I think that's an opportunity that by increasing the, the knowledge and understanding in our community of even what that means to, to work and live among people from different backgrounds and be comfortable with that, it would go a long way toward improving the economic development and the, the overall wellbeing of the community of Hartford and Vermont.
Just a quick note on the strategic plan, the very first recommendation is to collect boards, commissions, departments, programs, to collect demographic and data on race, gender, ability, establish baselines and then, sorry, when this data is collected, how it should be disseminated to the public. So that very object was one of the very, is the very first recommendation. Sarah?
Bring it around. I forgot about that. It was number one.
Is HQory doing that now or is that?
It's not a, it's, we have made several recommendations around that, but it's not data that HQory as a committee can collect. Like, it's not data we have access to.
We have done it through the cohort, through the organization of the town of Hartford for the, the town side, just not outward in the community.
So it sounds like we have some really strong opportunities to move forward and I just really wanna honor people's time, so I'm gonna move us forward. Just a couple thoughts. I want, one quick thing I wanted to go back to, Lainey, that you brought up earlier when you were thinking about the conversation that you're having with some of your constituents and people feeling like, and I hear this all over in the way, why do I always talk about race? Why do I always talk about race? So it's a longer conversation and I'd love to have it with you sometime because I think it's so important to understand, we've been talking about this at the school district level and I think this is one of the places where we've done, and I've been in those conversations at the school district where we've done it really well, is, and you talked about the zero sum game, we have that to start messaging to this community that this work that we're doing is good for everyone. Everyone does better when everyone does better. Everyone benefits when everyone is benefiting and getting what they need. And, you know, and I'm thinking that might be a way when you're engaging with people who are the voting community, the voters, to talk with them about that and help folks begin to understand that when we are talking about creating welcoming, just accessible, whatever languages we wanna use, communities, that it's good for everyone. And one of the examples of that I'll just share quickly, at the high school, I was talking to a high school teacher recently who told me that white students at the diversity and equity inclusion, the student diversity and equity team, talked about with her what is hard for them when they see teachers not interrupting our racist comment. So the white students, the students who are not being directly impacted, but are, but we're talking about how the learning environment feels hostile to them and they're uncomfortable, particularly when they're trying to figure out their own skills around how to speak up, but that they're also in relationship with these other kids who are not white. So, you know, at the school level, and that's a high school skill that these kids are developing and we could be doing at other levels as well. But there are, you know, conversations that we need to start messaging. So this is not just about creating opportunities for one specific group of people, that this is about what the community can strive for and how everyone can benefit. So I just wanted to kind of put that in as a plug.
Max, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I, I, I need to, I need.
Rocket, we gotta stay upstairs.
Excuse me, I will finish and I'm happy to give you the mic, okay? Thank you. A couple things I wanna share with you because I spend a lot of time in municipalities, I spend a lot of time in communities, I've been doing it for many months now, I was just in a different community, stopped with you here last night. And one of the things that I think will be also helpful in this collaboration is really remembering and holding true to your core values. Because you all got involved as school board members, as educators, as select board members for some particular reason, and it wasn't because you had nothing else to do on a Tuesday night. I want you to remember, like, what are your core values and to maybe have a conversation as a select board and a school board, so that there's some way of building cohesion so that the boards can go and do some of this other work that we're talking about. Because if you don't have a common vision and understanding as a group and as a committee or as a select board, and HQory knows this better than any other committee, you can have divergent opinions, but you have to come together on something that, where there's common ground. So I'd really encourage, you know, as you move forward, to, to kind of go back to that because that will drive your practice. Your core values will drive your practice. And we've talked about this at the school level and it really has, I can show up at the school level in a lot of ways. One more thing I'm gonna say, somebody talked earlier, maybe it was you, Rocket, about this idea of what is good government, which I thought was, what is good government? What I wanna say is good government is equity. Equity is everything. Everything that we do is, is, is the driving force, you may not agree with me, is about equity. So good government is good equity, good classrooms is equity. And the more messaging we can do to people who are resistant to these ideas, the better we can move the needle. And I guess I'm giving you the last word.
I'm glad, Rocket, you took me as my cue.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, right. Thanks, Michael.
You know, I'm in the uncomfortable position of being the sole minority on the select board and it's not something that I enjoy at all. When I hear about white students in a diversity committee being uncomfortable about a teacher not calling out people now, there is a part of it which is, yes, it's great to know that your friends have your back and the authority's being held accountable. There's another extent to which, sometimes, and I would encourage everyone in this room to go privately, one-on-one and speak to friends in a really empathetic way, racial minorities. A lot of times we don't care or we don't care enough to have it addressed. These are stopping the whole classroom environment to seek supportive advocacy can also inadvertently cause the singling out or the tokenization or the feebleization of a racial minority. So I just, especially with you being in a position of education and in classrooms, it is so important. Of course, we have these issues that we need to address. In a lot of my private conversations with my own friends, many of, some, I was telling that earlier, there are, I have two Asian friends who don't know what BIPOC is. So the, the degree, we are not a homogenous crowd and our response to these different forms of advocacy is going to be very different. And so I think it's really important to make sure that the advocacy is actually about an empowerment and not actually about the accidental undermining so that there can be a white savior, savior. I know that there's all good intent and love in this room, so I don't wanna be critical of anyone, but just to be super mindful that that is something that a lot of us feel, but do not necessarily want to say aloud.
I would say some. I would not say a lot. Even as two minorities in this room, we have very different opinions. So I, I, I do respect what you said.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But we have two different opinions on this.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Rocket. Thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. This has been a very nice meeting. Thanks, everyone, for listening and being able to participate. I think that made for a much more productive meeting than we would have otherwise and I hope that we can do it again. Please go take or eat some of the food in the other room, because otherwise I have to lug it home. So I think, I'm not quite sure how we adjourn these, other than the select board will adjourn and be back in five to six minutes.
Well, we're not gonna actually adjourn. We have a little business that we have to do. So we'll, we'll go, you know, we'll go ego.
Before we do. Mary?
Mary? Before we head out, I just wanted to make a very quick comment. You know, in listening to all of this, what I find fascinating is this conversation is the same conversation that goes on at every single level in this state. And you notice how emphatic I'm being? Our legislative body of 180 members, imagine 180 people having the same doggone discussion that we're having here right now. And that's what we're doing. And we're not integrating either, you know? But we understand that something needs to happen, something needs to change. And it's important for us collectively to ensure that we do. So when I say I'm really proud of the fact that we're even having this conversation, that is critical. That is critical to success and it will happen and it will come. We just need to keep coming together. So, thank you.
Troy, thanks for letting me share the example. I knew you'd understand.
Thanks, Coach. I appreciate it.
So if you want to comment, please come up to the mic. Chico.
Hello, Chico Eastridge, White River Junction. Uh, back again, oh, our, oh, yes. Um, I'm back again with the new camera system that I was talking about at the last meeting. Um, and like get permission to be able to put it in the ceiling. Uh, and uh, I, I, I go over why we want this again, but uh, we've kind of, I've been trying to push for this uh, system now for about a month and a half. And trying to just like install this and I've just gotten kind of a run around. I feel like I've gotten a little bit frustrated. Uh, but uh, our proposal now is this is the system that we have. I can show you everyone how it works and uh, I would love to be able to show everyone how it works. Uh, and this is the system that we want to go with. We're conducting hybrid meetings still. Hybrid meetings are still something you want to offer. Uh, if you don't like the system, uh, then you're welcome to not use it. We can go back to just simply recording the meetings, putting on TV. Maybe those online a few days later, like they did pre pandemic. Uh, I think that would be a step backwards. You're welcome to say, we don't want, we don't want this system. Uh, that I will install it and.
What is the installation of like?
The installation would be essentially these upside down. The wires would be hidden. Um, and um, this whole tablet would move up to the, the desk. So the board is able to start any board that uses this room is able to start their meeting. And it's essentially you turn on the TV, you find your meeting and you push go. So that's, that's our operates.
Okay.
Use this system or there's no hybrid system that we're offering. I thank you.
So with the current system that we have had in place, the meetings have gone up shortly thereafter on the web. Okay.
They go live.
Right. Well, they go live, but you've also recorded them. So somebody can view them on YouTube.
You can view them on YouTube. You can do them on TV.
Right. So are these meetings with the owl going to be the same way? You can still do that.
Yep, we're going live to YouTube and TV right now.
So explain to me the benefit of the owl versus the other cameras. I guess I'm still not sure, not sold on what makes the so much better platform.
The, the benefit is, well, camera wise, we're using PTZ cameras that are running through a tri-caster from like 2006. That's running Windows XP. Uh, and the audio is also getting routed through that. We're now with this system, we're avoiding that. And uh, I mean, as, as any of you have experienced, the, the system that we currently have is far from flawless. And I'm not going to say this system's flawless. If I could make a flawless system, I'd be a billionaire. Um, but I believe that this is a going to be a more robust system with fewer flaws that the board can start. Let's say a videographer doesn't show up or we, we've uh, misidentified when a meeting's going to start. We haven't assigned someone to be here or it can start a meeting. You're not reliant on us being here, um, to get it going. Uh, and it's, it's kind of the, I kind of like how the owls in this case, which we're only using the video for, not their audio, we're still using microphones, which I think sound pretty good. Um, the owls will actually split apart who's talking so you can have multiple people in a shot at once.
Uh, so with the, with the owls, how can we be assured that they're focused on the individual that's speaking? Because previously the camera was aimed at the individual speaking and someone that was, say, um, could, had only the ability to read lips, could focus on what that person was saying. Whereas any owl screen that I've seen, there's multiple images on that owl screen. How will someone be able to use an owl device if they're only able to read lips? To be able to understand what's going on?
Well, I, I think someone would have a whole lot of trouble reading someone's lips. Given the current system that we have, it's a kind of a grainy SD camera system. And you can't guarantee that, I know I've operated the cameras here before it. People are talking and maybe I space out a little bit and say, ooh, I'm on the wrong camera. You can't guarantee that the human operator is going to be focused on them.
We just need to make sure that the systems that we have in place that are available for public, and these are going to be for the public, are really will be accessed by people with disabilities. And I see the previous cameras being a better alternative for accessibility for someone with disabilities in that, in that nature than the owl system. And I just need to have a better understanding of how the owl system is so much better at overcoming those problems of what we've had.
For one thing, uh, there, there are a lot of captions for these meetings. So anyone with a hearing disability can turn on captions and the captioning is pretty good.
But, but again, I mean, how do we know that the camera from the owl device is focused on the person that's speaking? How fast does this owl device shift from?
But it's not perfect. I'm not going to guarantee that's a perfect system that someone that needs to be able to read lips is going to be able to do. As I'm not going to guarantee that the system here is going to be able to provide that. I can't do that. Awesome. Well, I get that you want to.
Chico, I think my concern is, will, will someone from JAM still be with us?
We will be uh, remote. We'll start, we'll be in the room to start to make sure that you'll get accustomed to it. But we'll be remotely uh, adding chapters and if there's a problem, like a policy.
Remotely after the fact. My, my concern, just to be clear is sometimes we obviously get into conversations or we'll, we'll be moving pieces and we don't know that it's like off, right? So like, I, I worry that even if it's automated, that responsibility in live format is going to be all put upon us. Um, and I think that's probably my concern with it. And then we say like, okay, two hours later, we're like, okay, it stopped recording. We don't even know what happened. We have no way to troubleshoot it and um, it kind of defeats the purpose of doing it at all. So I think for me, it's like, I don't really care if it's these things or those cameras or whatever. I, I think it's from my heart and soul, it's more about having you guys here so that we can have that troubleshooted and so forth. But I don't know, is that just not cost feasible anymore or is?
No, I mean, because we're still, we're still paying for someone to be watching the meetings live, making sure that they're going out correctly. That you can hear them, that you can actually, someone remotely will actually be able to better tell if the signal's going out uh, correctly. But uh, to your point about knowing whether or not it's muted or whatnot, that's we, that there, you haven't been able to guarantee that that's true, that, you know, whoever's saying the board has pushed the mute button. And there have been times that, and actually that only hasn't been pushed.
That's true, but it's the offloading of that responsibility to another person rather than select work, which I feel like adding the technical responsibility on our, our point. Even with the clock, when Ally's gone, it's like Lanny's had to figure out how to do that, right? So I think, which is not like the, it's not been the biggest deal in the world, but just adding layers of responsibility to the select work in meeting.
Yes, but that's the, I mean, that's the, the job of running the meeting. We, what the pandemic kind of threw what we are in the air and made us kind of rethink things a bit. But we, you know, we originally sat there and we just reported things. We had no, nothing to do with whether people could hear what you're saying at home. Uh, you know, on a hybrid meeting or whatnot. That's, so what you said into the mics, we would be recording. We've, we've just recorded the whole meeting. Uh, and so we're putting the responsibility of running the hybrid meeting that we want to do on the board because.
So what I'm telling is, this is just public comment is that um, I think the board's going to have to decide, do we want to go forward with this technology or do we want to take away the Zoom launch? Uh, and that's something we can discuss as a board.
So keeping as is is not.
This, my understanding is keeping as is, it's not going to be an option.
This, this is what.
This is what we can do or we can give it as a, Gail and then Kim, I think that would be.
Hi, um, so Chico, I apologize if you feel like you're getting the runaround. And making a decision like this definitely takes time and also to get everybody together to be able to provide their input. I respect your input that you have, um, but I also feel that it's really important for town staff to be able to give their input as well. Um, on June 27th, I will have the IT staff will be here to give their, um, their input on it and what their position is. And so I respectfully request the board reserve making a decision until you hear from town staff. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gail. Kim, do you have a comment?
I'm just too quickly, and I can, I'll save my other one for next time. I mean, I think regardless if whatever hybrid option we offer, if we're going to continue to offer that, that the chair modify the script at the beginning of the each meeting to, to really make it clear that a hybrid option is a courtesy to members of the community and that if they want to guarantee participation in a meeting, that they should attend in person, similar to what the planning commission does. And then the other question I have is for Chico, why is it that my screen is taking up the whole TV screen?
That's because we pinned you earlier when you were the only person calling in. And currently I assume, assume you are the only person coming, calling in. So it's kind of like you're the, this is your, where you're sitting right now. We can pin you if you want. That was something that we did.
Well, that would be great if you do, because all of the staff members that are going to be participating tonight are also on.
Oh, great. Yeah, then.
You know, we really like you, Kim, but you can't have the whole screen. I'm sorry.
I was trying to eat my yogurt. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Kim. Anything else, Chico, just to wrap up?
Sure, uh, Gail, uh, the, so yesterday we received an email from you saying that as far as AV is concerned, uh, the IT department here is only willing to support an internet connection just fine. Uh, but so if that's the case, then why is that? I don't see where, why they would even want it to put on.
Certainly, and I appreciate that. Um, given the email of, the email exchanges, town staff was not given the opportunity to speak to the board as a whole. And until they have the opportunity to speak to the board and give their position, it's not appropriate for them to be designated to conduct certain duties. And so as the acting town manager, I've directed the IT staff that their role, until they have the opportunity to speak with the board and the board make the decision that their responsibility until then is to make sure that there's proper internet connection for these meetings to happen.
Sure. So I think the internet connection has been fairly stable in this room for the past few years. So I have no link on that part. Uh, and as far as input on the system, uh, I would, I would like to establish that we're using our cameras, our sound system, our Zoom account. And so it's kind of a, we, you know, so that we, we can bake the dough. So we're going to eat the bread. So this is kind of the, you can have all the, what you want, but this is what we're offering.
Yeah, I think we agree that. I think the question though with the staff just telling us is like, if we move to the system and it required like them to be here during the meeting to like troubleshoot, I think we'd want, you know, to, to consider whether that's something we would add to their responsibilities.
So I wouldn't, I, I personally am not asking the IT staff here to have to do anything for the system.
Okay.
And I have to make sure that.
Yeah, well, we'll take it up at the next board meeting, I think. So I appreciate it and thanks for running this tonight. And I think we can all now at least get a sense sort of how um, the system works. So people can see who it focuses on and everything like that. So, so appreciate it.
Focus is terrible right now.
Any more public comment?
Was the microphone off? Because it says a little, there's a little mute icon.
Great, thanks, Chico. Full comment? All right, we'll go to Zoom.
Okay, um, Marie, I see your hand first. Can you un, uh, can we bring Marie over as panelist for a moment?
Uh, good evening. Um, just some questions really. And um, I missed a few things at the last meeting.
Uh, Marie, could you introduce yourself? Sorry.
I'm sorry, I always forget that.
Yeah.
Marie from White River.
Okay.
Marie Alvin. Um, so one of the questions I had asked previously, didn't know if you guys got the answer yet. I probably should have asked it last week when Scott was here about the Haven being built for ambulance calls. Was that ever found out?
Uh, Kail, give us an info.
Hi, Marie. I believe um, that I did send you an email with Scott's response, but if you did not get it, I can send it to you. He did respond within 48 hours maximum of your question. So I will wait now while you're talking and see if I can find it.
Great, thank you. I don't remember getting that. And um, I just wanted to comment on that police report. Um, that certainly is a little bit more eye opening and helpful, I would think. Um, I was wondering about the new sign that's supposed to go on the Wilder parking ride. I guess that's been in the works for two or three months now. Didn't know what the status was on that.
Do we have a status update on that?
Um, we actually have Brian Godza. He's the director of public works. He is on Zoom or whatever we're on now. Um, so Brian, um, could you provide an update for that, please?
Sure, um, I got with Jeremy and we're in a process of getting the signs ordered. So hopefully, which I, I don't have a date for one that will be, you know, and we get them. But once we get them, soon as we will, we'll get them installed.
Also, they're not even ordered yet?
They're, they're ordered. We're working on getting them ordered. We just have, we just haven't gotten them in yet.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and then I didn't know what the status was going forward with the Wilder parking ride. Besides getting a new sign, was anything really ever um, decided? Is it going to be monitored? Cameras, you know?
We decided, the, sorry, Marie, we decided to keep it open. Um, I think the police chief and others are still thinking about, I mean, they're still sort of thinking about what measures could be taken and whether they'd be effective or whether they'd be too intrusive on neighbors or things like that. So um, I, I, right now, you know, and if they, we get a recommendation about something like increased lighting or something like that, I'm sure it will come our way. And we would um, prove it if, if that's what we want to do. But for now, it's uh, it's sort of a status quo there.
So just leaving it as is. Okay. And um, just wanted to verify that. And then um, one more thing that I guess happened last week, um, during the conversation about the parking ride was I remember Kim's um, asking Gail something about the amount of emails that we're getting received from the Wilder parking ride. And um, uh, Gail indicated there were quite a few. And then I remember Kim saying that, um, you know, that those emails should just be forwarded to her and not to Gail or have Gail not to deal with them. Whatever that comment meant sort of bothered me because um, for us here, I feel like Gail has been the only one we feel like we can trust and has shown respect of our concerns. And um, I, I don't know, it just seems like Kim's running the show down there. You know, she gets emails from Joanne and Bruce about Robin and then poof, Robin Adair's gone without even going through the proper procedures. And now, um, you know, she thinks our stories up here are all a joke as well do one of, you know, some of you others on the select board. So I personally feel that Gail is the only person we feel that we can even trust with our information at this point.
Okay, thank you, Marie. I think Kim has her hand up if she wants to respond. She can.
Hi, Marie. I did not suggest that the emails about the parking ride go to me directly, but to either the select board or the select board chair in an effort to relieve some of the responsibility from the acting town manager. And I appreciate, um, you may not have a, a significant amount of trust in all of us. And um, I'm sorry to hear that, but uh, there were proper channels followed for the other things that you um, just mentioned as well. Always happy to talk with you offline if you'd like to discuss further. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
That's good for me. Thanks.
All right, thanks. Lanny, do you have a?
Uh, no, not about this last one, but uh, plenty of information for the board. There's no way for a Zoom caller to be able to see this clock. I don't know how much time they have left. So the cameras are not focused on the clock. So they, they have no way to be able to understand if they're getting closer into time.
That was true.
Sounds like they didn't focus on the clock.
Right, I just.
I get your point, but.
Yeah, it's, it's just something for us to take in consideration, something for town staff taking consideration as well because now they have no way to know whether they're supposed to be wrapping up or not. And sometimes it's in the past if they focus there, unless we were to move it.
I will note that I think it looks like we're out of focus a little bit. I don't know. That's just the owl thing. Anyway. That, gotcha. Okay.
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I got you. I got you. We're going to have to think about how we want to proceed with this.
I know, it's, I understand.
Any more uh, public comments?
We have, um, can we bring Todd Campbell over, please?
I'm going to still run the clock.
Oh, uh, okay, Todd put.
Todd, you coming over or no?
Yep, his hand is back up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Todd Campbell, White River Junction. Um, I just wanted to weigh in real quick on the uh, uh, streaming and AV stuff. Um, I have been watching the select board meetings uh, at home on YouTube uh, for quite a while now. Um, it is a incredibly valuable service. Um, if you take it away, that's going to restrict access to the public conversation. So I mean, whatever the means are of keeping it going, uh, that's pretty critical. Uh, however, the um, I would encourage you guys, once the finalized video of tonight's meeting goes up uh, to stay, that you watch through it because the two hours of the joint meeting were borderline unwatchable. Um, we had a, pretty much a lockdown shot of the oscillating fan near the door, uh, which was near Joe Major, which stayed on screen because it's moving and it's got those lovely bright markers on it. So the AI is tracking that. Um, there's a whole lot of drawbacks to this owl system. So I, I, I don't know what your arrangement with JAM is, uh, but I would encourage you, if it's necessary, to find funding, to keep up with a manual PTZ system. And yes, by all means, upgrade the PTZ cameras um, instead of stretching them from four by three to sixteen by nine and getting some better resolution. So if there's money somewhere, even if it's next fiscal year, uh, I'd encourage you to invest in the AV and someone to be there in the room to operate it. Especially if you uh, lose your technician in the room, you're not going to be able to address stuff like a mic going dead and that, the battery going dead in the mic that you have at the uh, uh, guest lectern. Um, there's just so many, how are you going to put up the slide for the breaks? How are you going to make sure you're rolling on time? There's just so much stuff that's going to be problematic if you guys lose a technician in the room and rely completely on the owl. So, thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Yeah, and the, the fan is actually making an appearance uh, on the video as we speak. So it's always still in the show.
Well, sure. We also have this weird thing where the sound is coming from the TV. So it's playing the TV itself instead of the direct feed of, and usually people are just calling in and you see their names anyway. But like, um.
I imagine this is something for more discussion uh, next time, but we'll do the best we can tonight. Any more public comment on Zoom?
Oh, um, I see Michelle. Uh, can we bring Michelle over?
Hi, um, Michelle, White River Junction, Michelle Baleski, White River Junction. So I, I just have a couple of questions. I'm a little confused about um, the process for the parking ride and suggestions. I know I had made a number of them for the past couple of years. Lights, um, a camera, um, uh, another thing um, was uh, perhaps um, having people get permits. Um, uh, another thought was to hire somebody to monitor the, the park that isn't police so that the police can um, can be utilized for um, you know, other items. And, and perhaps um, if we're getting a parking lot, uh, meters downtown, that, you know, there would be a position. Maybe the meters would pay for a position for someone to, to monitor um, that kind of thing. So again, I'm curious, who is making the decision? The police department?
Ultimately, the select board will make the decision. I think that our public safety officials are talking to each other about possible, you know, what, what is possible out there and what are sort of the pros and cons before we get, you know, a decision? If they're like, put it in huge floodlights like the pro, you know, no one's going to be there. The con, the neighbors, you know, it keeps them up. Like they're, they're going to come to us with some of the suggestions and, you know, we're going to have to weigh whether we think any type of uh, you know, investment like that sort of overwhelms the, the negatives associated with it.
So Michael, can I ask a question? Are you guys going to actually talk to the neighbors about it? Or the public safety officials actually going to interview the people who actually are right next to the parking ride? Or is this just something?
I, I don't know if they're going to go out and interview the people, but certainly if something came before us like we saw last time, I think.
Well, how would you know?
They'll come and tell us what they think. I mean, that's what they do. They come in and they can tell us what they think. Say, you know, last time like five people came in and said, don't shut the parking ride. We need it. So I think that is the way that we get input.
Can I also clarify, can I clarify something that none of the neighbors, no one that I've ever talked to, anyone that lives around here ever, ever made a suggestion of closing the parking ride? So that, that has been blown up. And um, frankly, it's, it's really frustrating to um, to uh, have that, that the blame of that put on the neighbors. Um, and, and again, I have come and asked the select board over the years, um, you know, how we can make this safer and um, you know, it, it, and, and have it utilized for what the purpose is, right? It's for, it's for someone to park and ride and to share parking. And, and again, you know, if, if it's just um, you know, I think it has to be on data and I think, I think it would be important to talk to people that live around here. And some people don't, don't go to the meetings and don't talk because they don't want to be labeled as a NIMBY. So um, and, and in fact, you know, I've talked to so many people that are terrified of speaking up because of that. And um, I would just ask that you guys be thorough and, and be um, informative and, and really have a plan. And outline that plan and let people know so that the Valley News doesn't get a hold of this and blow it up, you know, to sell newspapers about Hartford and how awful it is because I'm so sick of it. It doesn't have to be that way. You know, we have a great community. We have great people living here. And uh, you know, the messaging is just so negative. And uh, anyway, um, and there's got to be solutions because just saying, oh, well, you know, and people have unfounded fears. Um, you know, try asking the woman, I sent you all a video of the woman who lives next door. And she was interviewed. And um, she has to live with that and that's not fair, right? So there's got to be a happy medium. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Heidi?
Hi, thank you to White River Junction. Um, talking about the parking ride, I have an actual couple of suggestions. I do suggest possibly speaking to the people that live right there. But um, after leaving that meeting, um, I spoke to Gail about the graffiti on the fence a long time ago. And I know that Gail and um, I'm sorry, I forgot his name. Um, the gentleman that works in your office that was looking for the grants for the lighting and possibly the charging. Dana? Dana. Um, I know you were talking about getting grants for lighting and cameras. Um, I was thinking about this. If um, together collectively painting, painting that fence in white, because even if patrol officers were driving in there at night, lights from their patrol cars would bounce off of it, it would be easier for them to look into cars. Um, even if they were driving by on the streets, they could see it easier. Um, and cutting back all the trees in the far end of that parking ride would be so much easier to keep it like cleaned up. Um, that's an idea. I also thought that since um, sleeping in vehicles is not permitted in, within our town limits if at say nine o'clock in the summer or even earlier, we fenced that off and someone from patrol goes up there and locks the little gate or whatever. That limits from them sleeping in that lot. These are just proposed ideas. This is just thoughts on my mind, but I really do think that lighting up there is a very, very good idea. There's ways of angling those lights away from the houses down to the parking ride. These are all just my ideas. I, I really do think something has to happen up there. And I spoke to Joelle in the hallway about things that the Haven could do rather than Hartford just doing everything. And I spoke to Joelle in the hallway about things that the Haven could do rather than Hartford just doing everything. About having annexes of the Haven and other towns to stop having other towns just coming here all the time. Is making small Haven annexes in other towns because this will stop drawing more and more people to Hartford Avenue. These are just things that I'm, I'm trying to make in my head. I mean, I don't know if the laughing is because of my ideas or something else.
She sneezed.
Sorry, I apologize. I thought it was a laugh.
No, she sneezed.
These are just ideas that I'm coming up with. I'm just trying to brainstorm how to take some of the alleviation off of Hartford Avenue. I mean, it's just an idea. So thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Ellie, do you have more batteries? Anyone else on?
No hands up.
Okay, little input comments, go to select board comments and announcements. Kim, you want to start?
Um, I will pass presuming, I mean, Juneteenth, someone should all mention Juneteenth. June seventeenth, two to four thirty at Lyman Point Park. Please join us. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan.
Uh, yes, just wanted to, um, Joe Major, our treasurer and former town member of the select board, accepted this sweet little plaque from the governor's office, just acknowledging Hartford as one of the towns that adopted the Vermont Declaration of Inclusion by May 2023. Hartford also has its own Declaration of Equity, Inclusion and Justice drafted specifically for the town, but just wanted to share that and thank the governor's office for that acknowledgement and happy to put this somewhere in town hall. We can keep it. I'm not sure where to keep it, but we can put it somewhere in town hall.
Sounds good. And Sally, you brought it in.
Yes, Queche Balloon Festival is this weekend and they are looking for volunteers. So I'll be volunteering on Saturday afternoon after Juneteenth. There's a little slight overlap, but you can make both. They are with volunteers. If you get free entrance and I think you might get the opportunity to be in raffles and sort. It's just a good thing to do a great event. And then also the West Hartford Library has a farmer's market and that is every Tuesday this summer from four to seven PM. And Laura Brooks over there in the West Hartford Library, they've really organized a great thing. I went, I stopped by this afternoon. That's why I got these beautiful flowers. They are from Wilder Flowers off on, I think, Jericho Street. And, um, yeah, they had live music, family friendly. It was just, it was really lovely, honestly. So I would encourage everyone to go there and support our local farmer's market. As always, the honor to serve the town.
Rocket, landing it. Okay. And I don't have anything. So appointments, no appointments tonight. We'll turn it over to the town manager for the activities.
All right, so we in finance, we have a credit card machine that we're going to get, get up and running. And we've heard from the residents that they would like the convenience of having to be able to pay at the window for the credit cards. So we will be offering that beginning of July. We'll promote it out there so everybody will know. We also have a payment box outside that residents have been asking for. It's not quite ready yet because we need to get the proper signing for it. Those of you who have drove here tonight, you see that the town hall lighting in the parking lot is finally underway. So we're very excited about that. June 22nd from six to seven thirty PM in this room, the state of Vermont will be providing a public information meeting regarding the VA cutoff bridge. So we certainly invite everybody to come and listen to what they have to say. Last week I participated with Lanny Collins, board member, as well as several, several residents in town to start the kickoff for the capital assessment at the Bugbee Senior Center, which was very exciting. We get to hear from a lot of, a lot of stakeholders. So it was great. Other than that, does anybody have any specific questions about?
Yeah, um, I think it's great. You're trying to set up a credit card machine for people to pay. But the question is, we did that, I remember over COVID, we allowed people to pay with a card, but there's a processing fee associated with that. Is the town going to pick up the processing fee or is the processing fee going to be assessed to the individuals that pay? Because it was, if I remember correctly, we, it was a significant cost to the town for the credit card processing fees. And I'm not sure if you've come up with a solution on how that's going to be handled.
So first thing is the amount that the town absorbed during COVID was inaccurately provided. It was not the significant amount that was provided to you. We do have a currently, we have an online system where the user pays the fee and the system that we will have in our office, the user will also pay the fee. And it'll be between two and a half to three percent, which is pretty standard. If you go to any business here, you are seeing the signs where they're asking for you to pay that fee. So to answer your question, no, the town will not be paying it. It is a convenience fee to the user of it.
Yeah. And then one other question I guess I had is, I noticed in here, then second time I've seen it is there was comments about water lines across the Route Four Bridge in Queche Gorge Bridge. And the second times come out and I guess I'm not understanding what's happening on the Queche Gorge Bridge and what part the town has in that. If it's a state project, I don't know what the state project is and what is actually happening there for involvement of the town.
Um, I would defer to Brian and I'm not sure if he's prepared to answer, answer that question. So Brian, if you're prepared to answer that, I would defer to you. And if you're not, we can certainly follow back up at the next meeting.
No, thank you. I can answer that question. So we have an eight inch ductile iron pipe, water main that goes across the bridge. So with what they're looking to do, we had a meeting with representatives from V-Trans about a week and a half ago. When they are rebuilding sections of the bridge, how it's current, the pipe is being currently supported now. It comes off the bridge, goes down and there's like a platform and that's how the pipe is being supported. They have to replace about a hundred foot of, the bridge is about 280 feet, about a hundred feet of that. Though that area needs to be replaced. So what we're working with right now is when this project was put forth, there was a dollar amount that the town committed, wouldn't say committed to, was provided to the town. Since then, it's come in substantially higher. So we are looking and working with V-Trans to see what we can do to lower that price on that. But it is a part right now, we would have to pull it out of the project, but that pipe does have to be supported somehow. It's not like we're replacing the pipe, but just when they do the bridge work, that pipe has to be supported or we're maybe potentially looking for an alternative way to get water on the other side of the gorge.
So follow up on that, Brian, if I might. How far does that water line go out Route Four?
Lady, that I can't ask you. I can't answer that question. How far down it goes, that I don't know, but I could get that for you.
And then maybe, I don't know, with the Gail would be this one answer just not, but we, we had money in the budget for this at some point, the town portion?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I, I'm not quite sure how much in expenses is going to be for the town and what's the timeline on this?
Well, the, the, the initial price, I call it a placeholder that was put in there for the V-Trans was $25,000. And they received one bid from a contractor and it's a lump sum price to support this. It's at $165,000. That's why we're looking to that.
So is the town going to have to incur the difference in the costs?
Well, no, we would be on, on the hook for the whole 165,000. And that's where we need to, we're working with V-Trans or trying to look to see if there's an alternative way to do that. I asked V-Trans about negotiating with the contractor and they didn't seem too excited to do that because it's a lump sum price.
And what's the timeframe?
I don't have a contract. I mean, it's a twenty, some work, I guess they'll start within maybe this year, but I think it goes through 25, but they're not pushing for us to give them an answer yet. We did have a three week window to respond, which we did. So now we're working with them, Lanny. I last, they're, they're still looking at other options too, in regards to what they can do or ask the contractor to do to try to lower that cost for us.
Wow. And we don't have any money to pay for this whatsoever. It's troubling. Okay. I thank you for your supply of information. I, it's scary to think about having to come up with that much money.
Well, when I believe me, when I saw the, you know, what they had put in and what our placeholder was, I was got right on the horn and let's have a meeting about this. So we're still working on it.
I'm not blaming anybody. I just very agree to hear that number. Just amazing. Any other questions for Gil?
Yeah, I just had a question if it would be possible and, and the environmental sustainability coordinators update to get updates on the climate action steering team and, and progress on the climate action plan. That would be great if those updates are available and could be included if Dana's able and willing.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. One more thing. What, I can only assume that they're still working on the system for the AC or heat pump system.
Um, actually I, Dana provided an update in the board packet and then he actually provided another one on Monday. But I think the one that was sent out on Friday is sufficient. Yes, they're making progress on it. I specifically asked him to provide an update because of the questions that I've been asked by.
Is this going to be additional costs? I remember, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I did read that. My apologies. Are we going to have to incur additional costs then for all the issues they're finding? I mean, the rails are straighter valves had we replaced all the way around, the, the extra labor costs.
I'm not comfortable answering that question right now. I think probably at the next meeting, we'll be able to give you a better answer.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Sure. Good work. Gail, I was just wondering, this is more of like a comment or something that I would love to have in conversation with the select board and Tom Scott over time. The fire department call logs, it just seems like such a high percentage is rescue medical. And I was just thinking about what the cost is for us to send an ambulance or a fire truck to support a citizen who's maybe say fallen down. It isn't, and doesn't necessarily require all that equipment, just like what we're going to have a move toward being more cost effective and surgical about our support. It's not really questioning that, but just an observation and something that I would love to maybe continue the conversation on as we go forward.
Certainly, if that's the will of the, the majority of the board that would like to do that, I'm sure that Chief Cooney and his staff would certainly provide information or maybe provide alternatives or at the very least have the conversation, start the conversation.
Sure. And I guess those people who want.
Well, I was just to give the board a little more context on my understanding is, there's a really high number of rescue calls of people who have maybe elderly or who have fallen down and just need assistance standing back up and getting to the restroom or getting to bed or whatever it is. And on all those calls, we're sending our ambulance and our fire truck. And so the cost to town per mile, I mean, if you look at like the replacement cost of those vehicles are extremely expensive vehicles we're sending for oftentimes recalls where it's, it's already a known, like the support that's needed is known because they called in for it. And also often similar addresses. So maybe thinking of that could be a place where we can ease burden on that department, but also be cost saving for the town.
Want okay to hear an update on from Scott?
I guess the, the only question I have is, how do you verify that that's what they are versus an actual call for? I mean, you, you haven't talked to the chief or about this to get the numbers, so.
No, that's exactly what I'm hoping to do is have that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, that would be a question, I think, naturally to ask the chief. I mean, it's just, does the majority want to get some info about the number of calls?
Not to put our chief on the spot, but he is on Zoom. I don't know if he wants to chime in if he has information, but just to note that he's on Zoom.
If he puts stand up, we'll hear from otherwise. Are there enough people who would like just to get a little more information about that from the chief?
It's possible, that's the thing. You know, we, we get a report from the police department, it's not possible to break down the calls.
He just tells them.
Yeah.
So I think if that's the majority of the board would like that, we can certainly have Chief Cooney come at a future meeting and have that discussion.
And if he can, you know, if there were logistical obstacles providing info or something like that, or just, you know, that's fine. Well, that's God. Well, the chief.
So if there are just some, excuse me, specific questions that, that he can be prepared for when he comes to the meeting, that would be, that would be good. So if you can decide as a board, if there are specific questions, so when he does attend the meeting, that it's meaningful.
Yeah. If you want to do that now.
Well, I mean, one of, one of my questions to that effect might be just even the, does the department feel burdened by those? I, yeah, like an honest question, do, do they feel overburdened by medical related calls? And then if it's possible to have a breakdown of sorts, that could like which of those are necessarily actually necessitating an ambulance or which are? I realize that's specific and if that's not possible, that's okay, but that might help us with.
So I suspect that after the fact, they will know, you know, they can look at data and looking backwards and say, how many of those calls did we actually need it? Was there any information we had prior to the call, whether it was the caller describing the circumstance or whatever? I, I think just for us not being professionals to better understand that data. And maybe it is like this is the totally optimal situation and in which case we just support that. Maybe there's a circumstance where the fire department might actually benefit from having a specific vehicle, like a passenger vehicle that they could go to. So we're not sending a half million dollar ambulance and freeing that as well to be available for other calls. So I don't know. So for me, it's more about just understanding the breakdown in the data and trying to figure out if there's ways that the select board can help the fire department be more efficient in their work and cost effective.
Kim?
Um, yeah, I think I would just add to that. I do think this is the, this is exactly the kind of stuff also that the community safety review will potentially address as well. And that Chief Cooney, like he and I both attended a presentation from the community nurse organization. Like I think there are all kinds of resources that could be, you know, strategically set up in a way to support all these needs in the most efficient and effective manners. And, um, I mean, I'd love to hear from Chief Cooney, just how he sees all those pieces fitting together.
Any other questions for Gil before we move on? All right. Thank you very much, Gil. We'll move to the board reports, motions and ordinances. Our first one is the South Main Street Parking Lot and Courier Street Construction Award.
Yes, thank you. We have Brian and Lori, both are on.
Great.
Lori, were you going to lead off?
Can we bring Lori over as panelist?
Hold on, Brian, we just got to bring Lori over.
Who's going to do this in the future? We'll do that in the future.
Bring him over?
Yeah.
Another good question.
Lori, could you? Could you unmute?
I'm doing it right now and Lanny.
That looks like a board member.
Yes. Hi.
I'm sorry, the lighting is a little bit challenging in my, my office here, but I'll do the best I can. I wanted to just sort of give you an overview of why we're before you this evening. On May 19th, I'm 2023, we actually put out, received five bids for the reconstruction of two of our main TIP projects. And that's to reconstruct the South Main Street Parking Lot as well as to finish off the last section of the Courier Street project, which was begun in 2017. And we had to hold off completion of this final stage until we were able to put it together with the reconstruction of the South Main Street. The two items were put out to bid together because it does make sense for them to be constructed together. We did receive one bid that was considered the low bid and that was with not excavating ink. And for a total of one, 600, $1,678,000 and 70, 741. That is comprised of the two components. 1,353,000, a little under 800 for the parking lot and 324, 945 for the Courier Street. There are details of the bid that are attached to the documents for this agenda item. And Brian can go over some of those. If you have any specific questions on that, Brian, do you want to pick it up here? And then I can finish off with the financial information.
As Lori mentioned, we had five bids come in. You will see, if you take a look at the bid documents, four of them were in a very tight range, a little over $2 million. Knox came in at, you know, 1.6 plus. But in reviewing it and having Chris take a look at it, having the engineers take a look at it, they didn't, they canvassed the bids. They did not find any, anything out of whack. It's all in their recommendation letter. So from our point of view, Knox is a responsible little bidder for this project.
So in terms of how the projects are going to be funded, as you may recall, that we often have the projects go through two stages. The first one is that the vote. the projects go through two stages. The first one is that the voters have to authorize it through and an item at town meeting, and both of these projects were done. And then their money has to be loaned for the implementation projects. So for the parking lot in twenty twenty, one point eight to two million dollars was approved by the voters. And in twenty twenty-two, a bond bank loan was issued for the full amount of that that is dedicated towards the construction and construction engineer for this project. For the Courier Street, that goes back to two thousand seventeen, when the voters approved it. The authorization for the town to go for bond funding, and that was issued in twenty seventeen. The remaining amount of dollars for that is nine hundred and eight thousand, not nine hundred and eight thousand dollars for that project, which will enable us to finish the construction well within the budget of that, what's allowed for both of these items. So in that regard, we'd like to make a recommendation that the select board approve the award of the contract to Knox Excavation in the amount of one point six, seven, eight, and seven forty-one and fifteen cents for this contract.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'm confused on the numbers here within the recommendation, Lori, because I just did some quick back of the napkin math here. Parking lot of one million eight hundred ninety, one million eight hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred plus the one million six hundred thousand minus the nine hundred eight thousand, I come up with two million five hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred.
So the, a contract, what I'm establishing is the amount of money that has been earmarked and allocated for the project. For the parking lot, the bond that was issued was one million eight hundred twenty-two, six hundred. That was what the estimate was at the time with all contingencies that were anticipated. We were lucky in that the cost of that came in below that amount, which is a one, three, five, three, seven, nine, five.
Oh, okay, all right, that makes sense.
So, right, and then of the one point six million that was earmarked for the Courier Street project, the the sections that have already been constructed leaves us with a balance of nine hundred and eight thousand. And of that money, we need to use three hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-five to award this contract. So both projects have sufficient funds within their respective loans to finish out the project.
Okay, I follow you. Thank you very much. And then one other question I guess I had is, how are we doing on alternative parking for South Main Street Parking Lot?
So we're working on that right now. We have agreements that we've worked with the courthouse. We have different entities within the downtowns. There's consolidated, consumer consolidated. We have some opportunities to park in their parking lot, which is also shared with the church, and the church is willing to make available some spaces as well. And then we have a couple other items, their property owners that we're working with, with the objective of being able to have enough flexibility to rotate it around. We're also going to be looking at minimizing the amount of time in which the entire lot would be closed off to the public. And I'm gonna hand that over to Brian for him to talk a little bit more about the staging of construction.
Well, the, we've reached out to Knox and we haven't gotten a definitive schedule from them as of yet. I think they're waiting for this action tonight before they really, you know, saying we're gonna do it at this. Do this portion then, this portion then, but they're fully aware. Chris and I did have a conversation with them. They're fully aware of the impact this is gonna have and how do we minimize that? I think once we get their schedule, we can then then fine tune it a little bit better to make sure we, there's gonna be disruption, but minimize it as much as possible. So.
Just that Kim Pastor Henrys.
Yeah, thanks for this update, Brian. If, when, when, before the the big other downtown construction started last year, Knox provided a, like a public forum place for people to come and ask questions with Jeremy and Chris were there. They did it in one of the rooms at the Hotel Coolidge. And I think it was, if anyway, if they're willing to do something like that for the parking lot construction as well. What I think would happen, even if it's mostly the business community that comes, if the business community members can share with their patrons and their employees what the alternatives are and and just have the information about it, so that would be helpful.
We had, we had briefly talked about that with Gazi, and I think there's a willingness for them to do that. And the other thing that, and Lori, we looked at too, is doing some type of interactive map for the, for the residents that we could get out and say, here's alternative parking spots. And with number of spaces for that, so somebody could take a look at and say, okay, I'm over here. There should be ten spots over here or whatever it might be. So there's a lot of work, like I said, till we really get his start date of when they're gonna wanna start, and then that'll be us, the push for us to get stuff done.
Awesome, thank you.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion, the select board award the contract to Knox Excavating LLC for the South Main Street Parking Lot Tiff Project and the Courier Street Tiff Project Construction for the total amount of one million six hundred seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and fifteen cents. And direct the town manager to execute the necessary documents and procedures to implement the construction projects.
Okay, we have a second from Rocket. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. All right. Yeah, thanks, Brian. Our next item is the fee schedule. Just you, Gail, giving us an update or?
Right, so each of you received the fee schedule. We do this on an annual basis. It takes effect on July first of the beginning of the fiscal year. And the numbers that are listed here are provided by each one of the departments and are required in order for them to operate their departments. There was one change that I wanted to mention on the very last page of the fee schedule. The markers for the Christian Street should actually be a hundred and eighty dollars instead of a hundred and fifty dollars. Other than that, there were no other changes.
Are the highlighted ones the ones that generally have an increase?
Correct.
Yeah, markers for.
Four corner markers in the Christian Street Cemetery.
Oh, corner, okay.
So our motion, I guess, is just to adopt the fee schedule.
Is there, is there a motion somewhere? I'm scrolling as fast as I can.
Yeah, I mean, does anyone have any questions for Gail about it?
And I do have all of the department heads that have fees that are available on Zoom as well, if you do have some questions.
Kim has her hand up.
Thanks. I'm just curious, this is more for formatting formality, but there's, there's some columns, some cells that have the like the hashtags in them as if they don't have enough room for the, for the numbers. Is that something that could be corrected before this were finalized? Like, for example, I'm looking at page, well, it also says page eight of five. Why is it seven of five and eight of five? Just you're talking about?
Or I, I don't, what?
I, I see the page numbers on the bottom. I didn't prepare the schedule, so I can see where the confusion would be.
So there's that, but then also the hash marks in the columns for things like the dispatch, dispatch contracts. Looks like the columns might not be wide enough for the numbers if it was an Excel thing. And it, their previous year's numbers. I just think it would be, if it is just like a typo thing, it would be great to fix it before it's finalized.
Ken, that might be on your end. Oh, no, because I don't see it.
It's fifty-three in our packet.
Page fifty-three in the packet.
Correct, the columns are not big enough. We certainly can make those changes and and bring them, bring it back. It looks like all of the numbers on for FY twenty-four, though, the numbers are accurate. And there are, they're all wide enough that I'm looking at, so I certainly wouldn't want to hold it up for for that part of it, but we certainly can go back and reprint it with wider columns. Thank you.
So do we not, do we want to hold on this then, or?
We can move ahead.
Yeah, the two thousand nineteen numbers don't impact what you're approving right now.
So I make a motion, we adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-four fee schedule that presented and authorized the acting town manager to implement the new rates effective July first, twenty twenty-three.
With the, with the slight change for the Christian.
With the change for Christian Street Cemetery cornerstone markers.
Well, after we get a second. So Mary's second is discussion.
I just wanna thank the staff and other department heads online for being on late with us, so and
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, unanimous. Okay, that's kind of that stuff. Commissioner Reports, Lanny.
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay, Rocket?
Nothing.
Valley?
Nothing.
Mary?
Sure. Hartford Conservation Commission, they're, at the time of this meeting, there is one vacancy on the commission and several interested applicants. They had a guest speaker, Tiffany Carlson of Queche Vermont and Connecticut. She would like to see a concerted effort in the town to promote and provide a pathway for pollinators. Matt Osborne talked about Greenup Day, that it was successful in its efforts despite a lower turnout and less tonnage of waste this time around. Thank you to all. He did mention that we had a refrigerator that they had to pick up and four sets of tires. The tree board planted fourteen trees. Willow, cottonwoods, and maples at Lyman Park from near to the water, rising upward onto the banks. Ted Levin naturalist led an early morning May twenty-seventh bird walk in the forest where about twelve people attended. And approximately twenty-two species identified, including tanagers, warblers, and burios, among others. June third was a workday for the town forest involving more than twenty individuals, including members and friends of the commission and the Upper Valley Mountain Bike Association. The town forester, A.J. Follensby, will be leading a walkthrough of the new cuts in the forest, explaining the quote-unquote design of the recent logging. On Tuesday, June twenty-sixth, the commission discussed bramble seed dispersal, particularly scattering berries by the new log landings, both for habitat health and to invite pollinators, particularly bees, and to encourage growth in the area. A date of August sixteenth at six P M is set for dispersal of seeds. More information regarding this seed dispersal will be forthcoming. And finally, next spring, April or May, the commission hopes to involve the town in working on invasive species that are working their way into the forest and its roadways. And some of those species are honeysuckle, garlic mustard, and Japanese barberry. And Parks and Rec, first off, there are two vacancies on Parks and Rec's commission. A few citizen concerns, the community gardens have been having some problems with an individual following rules. And also, the girls' youth softball has faced difficulties accessing field space for play, including no bases set out, no moat grass for fifth and sixth grade girls at Ratcliffe, despite initiated procedures last year to be organi- organizationally better. The community center survey questions are put on hold over the summer, but they are in the process of fine tuning the questions. Needle drops for both diabetes and other drugs continue to concern Parks and Rec Department, with Brett Mayfield doing research and finding that this issue is not specific to our area. It is countrywide. He suggests we move to mounting needle drop boxes at the most used parks, where currently they are found, Ratcliffe, Watson, and Summit Kilowatt North. They would be less than two hundred dollars, maybe much less, depending on whether we use metal or plastic boxes. You can mount for the security of children and dogs particularly. And some of you may know, I, I don't specifically, but there was a soft opening for the Sherman Manning Pool this past weekend with the official opening on June seventeenth, which is also our June teeth day. Oh, it is sunny pretty soon. And as Rocket said, there is a need for help with parking for the Queche Bloom Festival, for the Brian Hanson Scholarship Fund, and Summer Camp Ventures. Thank you.
Thank you very good.
Good.
Jim?
I got a couple, let's see, a planning commission met on May thirty-first. The, it was the town plan steering committee, so the, we're going to do the chapter on housing update. It focused on review of the draft goals, strategies, and actions for the housing chapter. Next meeting is scheduled for June twenty-ninth, and you can look for more information at the Homes for Hartford page on the town website. Town Manager Search Committee met on June eighth and went over the final recruitment materials, so the position can be posted. Resumes will be due early July and first round of interviews should begin in late July. And we'll be discussing potential interview questions that are next meeting on June twenty-second. Also, on that day, June eighth, the Planning Commission met to review another designated, preferred designated solar site, which I wasn't able to attend because I was at the Town Manager Research Committee meeting, but that is proposal is going forward and may ultimately come before the select board as well.
Jim, I don't have anything, so consent again.
Uh, I would like to move that we approve payroll ending six-ten, twenty twenty-three, approve meeting minutes of five-thirty, twenty twenty-three, approve the AP manifest of six-nine, twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and six-fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Select board means of argument improve for six-twenty and six-twenty-seven of twenty twenty-three.
Second? Okay, a second from Rocket. All those in favor say aye. All right, and we've got an executive session. I will take a motion to go into the executive session.
Make a motion under one VSA three-one-three, section three, that we enter executive session to discuss the employment, employment, evaluation of a public officer employee.
All those in favor say aye. Okay. I want to do executive session.
Just for honor for your notes, I had to include the, the actual citation of the law for that, so, remind statutes. It wasn't in the minutes, it wasn't in the agenda.
It just didn't have the statutory.
Statutory.
It usually does. Okay, we're good.
I'll take the motion to come out of executive session.
Make motion.
We have a second.
Rock and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, so we come back from executive session, we did not take any action which requires votes. So, take a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Mary, are you taking minutes?
I am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night everyone.
I made a motion, rock and a second did.
Okay.
Where should we put this?
I don't know.